Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank each of you. Our next item is for our agenda approval, and the board chair recommends that the school board approve the agenda for the July 28, 2020 special school board meeting. Is there a motion by Dr. Brennan, second by Dr. Gupta, for the agenda to be approved as you have it? Are there any discussion or questions? Yes, Ms. Morrison?
I have a question about where on the agenda we're going to have input from comments and emails and other things that we said that we would allow during this meeting.
Yes, ma'am. If under item C, if the agenda is approved as you have it at this time, where it says agenda items, there will be discussion, and that discussion will begin with comments from myself, superintendent, each board member, and then we will then open it up for comments that persons want to give from those who are present or any emails or summary of themes that we may have had. And then after that is over, we'll go into a discussion on potential vote.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. And any other questions regarding the approval of the agenda? Here are none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving our agenda for tonight indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we will now move into C1, which is our return to learn discussion. And we do want to let our public understand that we appreciate the fact that when you are operating at the top level, you become a topic of discussion. And we wanted to be known that this board and superintendent understand empathy in education. And for that reason, this discussion tonight is a fruitful discussion that we might continue to discuss the dynamics of our return to learn program, which is forever changing. And so at this time, we will, of course, guide the discussion, but I would like Dr. Edwards now to get us centered into what she needs from us and how we are going to proceed in delivering that either tonight or as soon as this board deems we can.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And as Dr. Coleman said, I'm just going to briefly go over our expectations for tonight. So I'm going to start with the end in mind and then back us up to the discussion at hand. So ultimately, at the end of the night, we would like, and I say would, like a vote on options. There are three presented, but the board has the will to modify any of the three or propose another option, or propose that we delay voting until our August 4th board meeting if there's more information that we need. So I just want to be clear that while we have it on the agenda as a vote, there are some options to consider. The reason why we're doing it as a special board meeting is really to explore what's best for our students, our staff, and our families, and try to use everything that we have right now to make the best decisions possible moving forward. That's number one. Number two, I'm going to lead with flexibility. We know what we know right now. We don't know what we don't know on September 8th, October 23rd, or even January 14th. We only know what we know right now. And we are charged with making decisions and planning the school year. Just some quick and timely things. On Monday, new staff orientation begins. So we are anticipating our new staff to join us on Monday. On Tuesday, all staff return. So the discussion that we have tonight is very timely in that some of our discussion will be about staff. As planned, if we go with option one, our pre-K through 5th grade students will begin their in-person learning during the week of August 24th, which is about four weeks away. So again, very timely. What we have before us tonight are three options. One is the return to learn plan that the board discussed on July 7th. With one exception, we had a lengthy discussion about face coverings at the last meeting on July 21st. So there is a consideration for children to wear face coverings not only on the bus, but in schools, and I'll clarify that a little bit. The second option is similar, except instead of having the pre-K to 5 start in-person learning on August 24th, the 6 through 12 start remotely. This would push it back so that all children would start remotely on August 24th, and then all children will begin in-person learning on September 8th, which is the day after Labor Day. And then the third option is to push back in-person learning until the end of the first nine weeks. So all children will still start school remotely on August 24th, and then the in-person learning will start on after the first nine weeks. That is not a hard and fast rule, so even though we are considering in-person learning and moving that target date, there may be some students who receive in-person learning, in-person instruction, one-on-one needs at any time once we open for students on August 24th. So I do want the board, I do want the public to understand that there's been some concern about some of our students with the greatest needs. And first and foremost, we want to assess our students and meet their needs. But in terms of a broad plan of what we're trying to present for Lynchburg City Schools, those are the three options that are up for discussion. Those options are based on a couple of factors. One, obviously being the health and safety of our students and our staff and our families. Second being just the current number of cases and whether or not in Lynchburg City, we're seeing cases increase, cases decrease, the number of positive cases. And we do use the VDH dashboard to try to monitor that. And then third, we want to make sure we have a quality education program. And knowing that we want that, that includes having staff that feel safe and comfortable in schools, having students that feel safe and comfortable in schools, and having families that feel safe and comfortable in schools, whether in schools is in-person learning or the virtual remote learning program. And then later, I'll do, as we get to the question and more discussion, I'll talk a little bit more about some of the questions that we've received in email for public, so thank you, some that I've received via phone calls or just passing conversation, and then also let you know of some of the documents that will be coming out in the next couple of days that will go out to families and staff and the community.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And so thank you for centering us. And of course, guidance is coming from other areas, and obviously, eventually, this board will need to make a decision. And so if it's okay with school board member Bill Evans, we'll start with you and kind of go around the table. What each of us need to be mindful of is each of you, I'm sure, have received emails from various persons. We would ask that if you are going to reference any of those, that it not be by name or any particular focus over one over the other as you generalize your statements. But you share where you are on option 1, 2, or 3, or any consideration or question that you may have. And we're cataloging it because we want to kind of see if we can do this in an hour. And of course, it'll be the will of the board to extend it in what we're calling C1, which is discussion. And then we will go into C2, which is a vote after the discussion, which will start with us and then entertain comments that may be coming from the public. All right, school board? Yes, correct? Yes, you can ask me a question, Dr. Gupta.
Superintendent provided a context, and personally, I wanted to see what our local Dr. Fauci thinks, how the infection rate is. So when we ask questions, we have some, you know, we're guided in the right direction, not just only by the emails. So is it possible to entertain sort of a context?
Is there any objection to Dr. Brennan giving a brief statement from his area of expertise before school board member Evans proceeds? If I hear an objection, we will go as a state of the matter.
These are infectious disease doctors in town.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. If there's no objection, then, Dr. Brennan, would you please, then we'll go to school board member Evans.
So, Dr. Gupta, you'd like some information about the current status of the cases in Lynchburg. Okay. If it's okay with the board, I'm happy to provide that information. So things changed a lot in a week. So comparing our meeting last week on July 21st to our meeting tonight, and I'll give you some numbers to compare what's happened in the last week. So very briefly, on a national basis, a week ago, there were 3.8 million cases in the United States. Currently, there are 4.3 million. So nationally, there's been an increase of about 500,000 cases on the national level. In Virginia, last week on July 21st, there were 79,300 cases in the state, and these are based on the Virginia Department of Health data. As of today, there are 87,000. So there's been an increase in the state of Virginia of about 7,700 cases. In our local area of central Virginia, which includes Lynchburg and the surrounding counties, Amherst, Atmatics, Bedford, and Campbell Counties, there are now, a week ago, July 21st, there were 670 cases. There are currently 890 cases, which is an increase of 220, which is about a 30% increase from last week. And I'm looking to Dr. Sinha because she has also been following the numbers. So I appreciate your comments, Kim. And the last point I'll give you, which we talked about last time, is the percentage of positive COVID tests, which are felt to represent in some way how, what the current status of the epidemic is, with 5% or less being felt to be not epidemic state or smaller number of cases, not concerning, above 10% is more concerning. In central Virginia, listen, I'm sorry, in, yeah. Yeah, so for central Virginia, in May, we had 2.2 percentage of positive cases. July 21st, a week ago, we had 5%. And as of today, we have 6.2%. And then my last comment is that when we met on March 2nd, 2020, four months ago, we had 100 cases in the United States. So I think there's been a pretty dramatic change over the time, and just since last week, there's been a significant change.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. School board member Evans.
Dr. Sinha, you want to comment? She's also...
Yeah, I can share with you all some charts. So I charted the testing, and the lowest level of geography we have for testing is the central Virginia Health District. Unfortunately, we do not have Lynchburg-specific data. But if you look at the trajectory and the increase in the number of testing over time, it's comparable and on pace with the rest of the Commonwealth. But if you look, and I've charted the seven-day average, which, because it's a lot of ups and downs depending, and these data are constantly changing because somebody could have been tested on July 15th, but because the results aren't known, it's not reported here. So the more recent data is less accurate because of delays in testing. But our positive rate is increasing alarmingly, in my opinion. And according to the CDC director, he considers, his definition of a hotspot is any place with a test positive rate of 5% or more. So I can share with all of you these, is that okay to hand out something, or do you want to wait?
Sure. And when you come back around to you, anything that you think would inform the board that...
And then...
Is...
Yeah, and I've also plotted the growth in cases over time.
Great. We're going to come back to you, Dr. Sinha. Thank you for the expertise around this table, and it's so appreciated. We're going to go to the school board member Evans, and then move to Morrison, and move around in that way. Thank you.
Okay, I have one quick question. With what we're voting on, if numbers between now and, say, we just picked September 8th, that gives us a lot of time to look at, we're willing to make changes if necessary, correct?
The key word is flexible.
Okay.
I think the superintendent is operating with that premise, and so are we as a board.
Okay, so if we're operating that way, I think I lean toward option 2. And not, I am not as concerned about 6 through 12 coming in. I, as a parent, will keep my 11th grader at home if it means we can get the K through 5 in school two days a week, even if it's just K-5. I think that that should be an option to look at, keeping 6 through 12 at home the first nine weeks, and getting the elementary age, the kindergarten, first, second, back into school twice a week. Without a doubt, with the mask mandate. And I think from the surveys we've gotten, that we've got enough teachers willing at that level to come in and teach two days a week. And if somebody does have a medical exemption or reason they can't be there, that we'll have enough staff that wouldn't be in the buildings, but some of them are willing to be in the buildings, that we could change out. And the other part of this is every parent does still have the option to pick online, correct?
Yes.
So if you live in a home that you're worried about a child bringing germs back home, you can choose online. And I think that's really critical, that a parent can pick online, but I'm really, really concerned about the K through 5. So I lean toward option 2, with letting 6 through 12 make it the first nine weeks online and revisiting that then, but trying to get the K through 5 in the building two days a week. I think they desperately need to be there.
Thank you. School board member Susan Morrison?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. You stated many of the things that I had. I am, at this point, still deciding which option I will support, because we got these options yesterday, and I've spent a great deal of my time today looking at research, reading CDC, looking at what other school divisions are doing, look at their rate of COVID positives. And so I'm still formulating, but I do, the key to me is flexibility, because this thing could change tomorrow. We don't know about the test from two weeks ago. My biggest concern are our early learners. I have two. Our early learners, because we know, I'm worried about pre-K through 3rd not having face-to-face instruction. I just don't know how virtual learning will work for our youngest learners. My second concern is getting out there what virtual learning will look like. It is not the choice board of last year. It is true learning with accountability, with grades, with teachers. And I think that there is a disconnect because of the choice boards from last year. I would caution viewers to remember that we had a very short time to turn around. We went from being open to shut down, and we had a very short time to turn around. I know that teachers come back Monday, but I do know that virtual learning will be part of anything that we offer. So if that's where teachers need to start to prepare for something, that would give them a starting point.
Sorry. I forgot to add one thing to mine. It wasn't just the young learners to me, it's also kids with special needs.
Yes.
English, a second language, all of, those are the ones to me that we've got to get some face-to-face with.
Okay, thank you. So noted. We're going to go to school board member Brennan at this point. And what we're doing at the present time is each person is sharing whether you have thoughts about option 1, 2, 3, or some other suggestion or general thoughts you'd like to share with the board. School board member Brennan, then we will go to Dr. Carter.
Sure. Could I ask a couple of questions first? And number one, I was going to make the point that Ms. Morrison just made, as far as showing, demonstration of what the virtual learning system will be like. I think, I think you're exactly right that the community is thinking it's the same thing to happen in the spring, and we're hoping it's not going to be that. So I think in some way to get that information out would be very helpful. And then, and then two questions. One is that we're always concerned about our bus drivers and trying to maintain bus drivers and, you know, making sure they're compensated appropriately and they're protected. But what would be the effect if we went to option 3 on the bus drivers if there was no, if there was no need for the bus drivers during that time? Would their positions be suspended? Would they be furloughed? How would that work?
If kids are not present with us and they are doing remote learning at home or other places, then we're back in the food transport business as we were in the spring, because one of the things we need to do to ensure our learning is make sure kids are fed. So our transportation and nutrition departments would go back to that collaborative work that they did during the spring to make sure that every child in Lynchburg City has meals, breakfast, and lunch.
So the bus driver situation would not be at risk if we were to go to option number 3?
No, we would need the bus drivers to transport the meals. And, you know, point well taken, when you think about pre-K 2, one, we aren't providing remote devices or online devices for them, so we may also have to, similar to the spring, drop off some remote activities or information for them so that family, those kids can still continue with their program. And that may be the case anyhow, even if we all, you know, didn't go completely virtual.
And then one other question is that I think there's a lot of discussion within the community that if we were to go 100% remote learning, that some populations would then develop their own pods in some setting, that they would, families would come together and teach each other, or something would happen on that, that level. Is, and I think there's been discussion with the schools and maybe with rec centers and other places, is it possible to have a pod setting for the community that is more socially, more economically disadvantaged, where those students would not be left at home on those days, either if we're all out or they're, if it's a hybrid model?
So first and foremost, let me say, if there's any way possible that I could get the students that need that in-person learning in schools, and as you alluded to, some of our survey data says that we do have staff who want to do the hybrid model, we do have staff who want to be, to do the in-person. And again, that may change as time goes on, because staff are also allowed to be flexible in their decision-making. That would be my first option, to have our kids that need that in-person with us, even if we are doing a remote learning option as our base main option. So I would, I would err on, I'd rather have them in the buildings, with the teachers, with the resources, than trying to provide the teachers to an alternate learning site. And I'm sure, you know, if I speak for my teachers, if they are going to work with children, the most comfortable learning environment for a teacher is his or her classroom.
Thank you.
All right, school board member Carter, you'd like to share your general thoughts or reflections about the discussion for tonight.
Well, I know that there are just a lot of concerns from different customers that we serve, the teachers and the students, the community, and stakeholders regarding our opening, and some were to caution not to wait until this virus is over, because we don't know how long that's going to be. Other cautions are the splintering of students that may go somewhere else or look for educational services in other places. But I really think the way that we're going is a measured way and a caution way to, that's cautionary. And also that it's allowing the, these teachers also to be prepared or ready to come back. And that's one of the concerns too, is how, for their safety and for their, for themselves economically, if they are, do contract COVID-19 from working in the school system or is associated with that. I, I've talked about before that I wouldn't be opposed to waiting until you, doing the second option, of making sure that we all go back in September and start first with the virtual and then go online. I mean, virtually and then do face-to-face. But we do need that face-to-face. And if, and I really think if it's the synchronous type of virtual learning, but I don't know whether we can all do that, where you have to come and you have to be present, and that's more engaging, I feel, because everyone is there, you're looking for people, and then that way, if we see any problems with students or whatever, we can try to help them in that way. But there, there's no winners here, and this is not a decision that we take lightly. We're hearing from different people in the community, from teachers, from parents, and from just people in the community regarding, we don't want to be the school system that's not educating students, and we're trying our best to do that. But I think also that the fact that we're going to try to work with centers to try to get programming going there, that's one of the concerns too. If we're now having students go to centers and they're into mixing with other students, then why can't they just be in school? And I know transportation is another issue. And then you have parents who work, and they're going to be working five days a week. So what do they do with their students during the other three days? And then you have parents who are afraid to send their children, or older, they go to older parents, maybe in the afternoon or in the morning, or this their guardian, and they're afraid that the students are going to bring something home to them. So there's just a lot of moving parts, and the guidance from the, from others, from higher-ups, it's really not there to really help guide us. We wanted to call the doctor, Senator Warner, yesterday, and we really want, I wanted more guidance as to what we really should do. And I think the school systems have been working their best with each other to try to figure out this and help and be flexible. And even on the different sites, you see that they said this is the calendar for now, that it may change, and, you know, you almost have to keep up to date day by day as to how they're going to interact and...
Okay, so I think I heard you say option 2. Very good. All right, Dr. Neillis.
Some in favor of blending option 1 and option 2. The pre-K through at least grade 3, I think, should start as soon as possible in person. They're a very low-risk cohort for spreading COVID amongst themselves, as well as transmitting it to adults. It's clear from U.S. data, particularly in European data with schools. There've been a couple of clusters overseas with schools, but at least in one case, that was a high school, where the staff and students were not following the masking guidance, nor were they following the social distancing. They were getting together after school and enjoying each other's company, as high school kids are like to do. And so there was a local outbreak at that school. So I'm in favor of bringing the K through 3 back, as pre-K through is back as soon as we can. I think the 4 to 5, 4 to 4 and 5 graders are probably low-risk also. The option 1, I think, bringing the other kids, students back after two weeks, I think that's too soon, given our situation. We have roughly 400 cases in Lynchburg and out of 80,000 people. It's a pretty low infection rate. I should say that's a pretty low active known infection rate, as opposed to how widespread this is. The other thing, this is going to be with us for a long time. I mean, we have to figure this out and try to get back as, get the kids back to school, some semblance of normal routine, get them educated. There's all sorts of negative consequences associated with kids being, being isolated, particularly the younger kids. So...
Thank you, Dr. Neillis. All right, Dr. Finha?
Well, just a couple of quick comments and then a question or two. One, I just want to put it on the whole Lynchburg community. The reason our numbers are going up and our infection rates are increasing is people are not masking, they're not social distancing, they are not staying at home. It's rare that we go out to a restaurant, and we only go to the ones that have outdoor seating. We went to one on Friday night, and we were the only people eating outside. Place was full. About a third of the people entering the restaurant wore masks. But the community wants in-person instruction. We all have to do our part. You can't just put this on the superintendent and teachers to get it done. So that's sort of my complaint for the day.
At least she didn't take a code for anybody.
I know, that's, that's good.
That was a very proactive statement.
There you go.
As far as childcare goes, that's another one. Public education is not a childcare service, and I realize it's a big problem. Public education is not a childcare service, and I realize it's a big problem, believe me. But that means employers got to step up. They either have to offer stipends to their people so that they can afford childcare, or they have to provide it onsite. But school district has enough to worry about, other people can deal with the childcare problem. And it's a real problem, and I'm glad it's finally coming to the fore because it's always been a problem. So, there's that. A question of the, if, if the older grades, like middle school and older, were to do entirely virtual, I'm just thinking outside the box here, and maybe I'll get us in trouble for doing this, and I hope not. But if all those students are not coming and physically taking up space in buildings, is it possible then for the K through five or K through three, using other buildings to actually have five days a week teaching because, for that first grading period? And then, because, and here's why I'm offering that. I agree, you know, that socialization and getting into a routine is very important for kids, especially for the youngest ones. They need to get into that. And I worry that that two days a week with five days in between is not going to cut it. I realize we're stuck with that because we have to have distancing, we only have so much capacity, and people who want five days a week, well, you're going to need twice the buildings, twice the buses, twice the drivers. You make it happen, we'll make five days a week happen. That's the reality. We have to follow the guidelines that were, that were handed. However, if physically for that first grading period, is it possible? Now, I realize that will cause some disruptions because at the end of the grading period, kindergartners who are going to Sandusky Middle School, for example, or third and fourth graders maybe, the older of the K through five could go to the middle school for the first, first grading period and then come back. And then, I think if we, if we have to continue two days a week, which we probably will, at least they will have had that immersion of five days a week. I'm just trying to think creatively and present that as, as a possibility. And I realize that's a really complicated thing to pull off, but we'll have this capacity available. And for buses, maybe they can start on a staggered schedule, sort of, they're in these alternate sites for that first grading period so that we don't really have to triple up on less, well, whatever. It's a lot to figure out in a short time.
Dr. Senha, let's stay with you, but I'm intrigued by your first question. Could we give the superintendent an opportunity to talk about the feasibility? You still have the floor, we're going to come, go right into you, but that's very intriguing to me.
So, when we first were considering all options, and I'm sure, you know, I had a team of folks that were working on this, and there was discussion about, well, bring in the younger kids and keep the older kids at home, and could that be done with the busing that we have? If you looked at the return-to-learn plan, which we eventually came up with, which was all kids getting some in-person instruction, there's part of the transportation fleet that is getting the elementary schools cohorts, AA, BB, back and forth, and part of the fleet that's doing the middle and high school. So, if, as you suggested, middle and high school are not being transported to school, that part of the fleet would be available to pick up more elementary schools, and then we would run into the problem of, well, where would we put them? In a small school like Darrington, which would max out pretty quickly. And if, you know, you see glasses up the street from Darrington, if that were a place where we would put the children, that is possible, and I do know other divisions have considered rerouting and repurposing buildings for children to, to do that. So, that is a credible possibility. I'm glad you kind of clarified it as to the older kids because high school toilets are just a little bit higher than my preschool kids might be able to manage, and we just want to make sure that they're comfortable and safe, and we're not adding additional risk just because of their small size and larger facilities.
Yeah, I, I agree. The facilities themselves are not built for little ones, but I think the disadvantages of that are outweighed by the possibility for that first nine weeks to have them all five days a week by spreading them out in unused capacity. And then seeing where we are after that, we'll still have to exercise distancing, so they'll probably have to go back to a two-day-a-week schedule. I think if we can warn parents and families ahead of time so that they can plan, they'll know.
The one downside of that, and I should mention, having been a chemistry teacher, is if you have now taken my classroom to use to teach third grade, then I, as a chemistry teacher who may be doing my remote learning, flipped classroom, videotaping myself, may not have access to my lab and my document camera and things that I would want to do in my classroom with the resources in my classroom. There is a trade-off for that because many of our staff are looking forward to that part of it as well.
I, I grant you that, and hopefully we'd find a way to maybe work around that. I'm not saying it, it's going to fix it. It just popped into my head, right as I sat down. I haven't put that much thought into it, to be honest with you, and it's always risky when you think out loud with cameras on.
We're in problem-solving mode, it is not risky, we keep thinking.
On the, on the issue of pods that people are going to do, well, I see them doing it if we all do in-person, because people don't want to send their kids, they're going to do pods, and then the other people who are going to do it if it's all virtual. Well, I don't know that we're going to satisfy the people who have the means to do that, and I'm not sure how to respond to that.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about satisfying the people who don't have the means.
Don't have the means.
If you do pods for that group, the other group, I'm not worried about.
I would hope that, again, the community, we all need to chip in here. You know, interestingly, I read this editorial or thing in the Washington Post, it actually made me laugh. It was kind of ridiculous because, as you all know, our budgets have been cut because tax revenues are down, so the economy shut down. So, there's not a lot of money, yet all these things are expensive. So, they're saying, we can make schools work. Yeah, just have these rapid saliva tests that don't even exist yet that, you know, and provide additional sick leave for teachers, which I think we can do. The parallel remote learning tracks, which we'll have to do for children that are sick, but that's doubling the work. So, even if you think virtual education is less, lower quality, we still have to prepare for it because kids are going to be in quarantine, their families are going to be in quarantine. It has to be done. There's no way around it. Masking, definitely. So, we definitely want to make that mandatory. We have to find a way to make child-sized masks available. And let me tell you, just sitting through a board meeting, which isn't all day, these things get stuffy. So, we need multiple masks for kids to sit through a day, reality. Somehow, we've got to make that happen. Community, welcome to pitch in. Then they say, put an air cleaner in every classroom. Yeah, a portable air purifier with a HEPA filter, which, by the way, only costs $300 per machine with a replacement filter for every room in your schools. I'm sure you have the budget for that, Dr. Edwards, don't you?
Yeah.
Love it. And then they say, you know, bring twice as much outside air as the minimum ventilation standard, which in the wintertime means extra heating, in the summertime, extra cooling. Yeah, we've got lots of money laying around for utilities. Replace every circulated air filter with MERV 13 or higher. I don't know what we're using there, but I imagine the expense of replacing them all, should they need replace, need replacing, is nothing to sneeze at. And open windows and use simple box fans to pull outdoor in, but even simple box fans, again, for rooms that have windows. So, and then they say, hold classrooms outdoors, turn city and town parks into tented classrooms. If people have large venues that they want to loan us and put a tent up on it for us, we, we'll, we'll look into that.
Dr. Senha, thank you, thank you for your sharing. Very, very passionate and very well-heard. All right, Dr. Senha, Dr. Duta.
Thank you for changing my name.
Don't want to do that.
Both are Indian surnames.
Yeah, but only one of us, only one of us is really.
It doesn't make much difference, but I have a comment, and a few questions for Dr. Edwards, if you.
Sure.
If the chair will allow. The comment is, I know K through three, K through five need to be in class, but they are not kids teaching the kids. We have to put adults teaching those kids. And some of those adults may be at my age with my type of underlying health conditions. So, we have to take that into consideration, that we're putting those teachers. Health has risk, and their family's health at risk, and their life has risk. So, please keep that in mind when we say K through three, K through five, but they are not taught by similar-age individuals, they're taught by older adults, and some of them may be very experienced, talented teachers we have in our Lynchburg City school systems. So, having said that, I have a few questions for Dr. Edwards. The first one is about the quality of education. You know, and for the university levels, we have, if you're an online education provider, you're part of an NC SARA consortium, which makes sure that your expectations and education delivery is at par with what your in-person instruction is. Now, if you've gone through from March till now, you may have the assessment data. What's your impression? What was the quality of instruction during those three, four months? Virtual was at par, below, and what have we done during the summer? If it is below par, to bring it up.
So, first, that's comparing apples to oranges because in the spring, we did not have a mandatory remote virtual face-to-face in-person, I'm sorry, online instruction as our platform. And if you recall, it was closed for two weeks and then closed for the year, and then grading and whether or not it was new instruction. There was a lot of conversation which led us to the choice board. So, it, it would be difficult for me to compare spring to fall because one, the expectations are not the same in terms of measuring outcomes, student data, teacher expectation, teacher observations, be it virtually. None of that was an expectation set as a mandatory thing for staff. So, I really don't, I cannot give you a solid answer from that. But I can say that, you know, we all, and when I say we, I'm saying public school, public education, because it was not what we did. We ran, we are a social institution, we ran an in-person learning institution up until March 13th. And not only did we run an in-person learning institution, we trained teachers on how to work with kids in person. We bought furniture that put kids together for collaboration. Everything that we did was to bring kids and staff together to collaborate and not be in the virtual space, so to speak, in a different, different realm. Since March 13th and, and closing of the school by the governor, we had to go back and retool. So, that is where we are right now, recognizing that we do need to have that virtual platform with clear expectations for all staff, not just ones who, hey, I had a couple of courses in it, I'm ready, or, hey, I've never taken a technology virtual course, and I'm not ready, I'm not trained, and we don't, we don't have that. So, going forward, I think what is key about our remote learning program that people need to understand, and I'll see if I can demonstrate it as best as I can, even with our plan of two days, you know, the AA day, and then you're off, and then you have self-directed learning, you're on this track. With the virtual remote-only learning, you're kind of on the same track so that there's fluidity between, and here's why. We don't know, we could start in-person and get in there, we could get all of our pre-K five in, and then in three weeks be shut down and have to go to remote. So, what we want to do is be, if we're shut down and go to remote, then we're just continuing on that track, except the delivery is different. The content is similar, the expectations are similar, the assessment is similar, the measurement of student growth is similar. We're just using more of a virtual delivery method with our students. And that's one of the reasons why, and, and one of the questions was, why are we not using the virtual Virginia curriculum? Because once you go virtual Virginia, it might not line up completely with what we're doing, and kids who might start in virtual Virginia and want to change out will find it difficult because we're offline, or vice versa. So, that's where we are. Monday, I said teachers are coming back. We have pushed the start date for in-person instruction for sixth through 12th grade until September 8th. That gives our teachers a very long time, especially at the higher-level content, content area specialists, to get that in-person instruction so that we can have those common expectations. For my administrators, it's a whole different realm, walking down a building and saying, let me stop in this room, let me see what's going on in this room, let me check on kids in here, let me, I hear something, I can move. We lose that when we have the remote instruction. So, administrators have to know, how do I evaluate quality education in this remote learning setting, which is different than building access and being able to walk into any classroom at any time to see anything? And they too are getting experiences in that. So, I think we're setting ourselves up for success.
What I'm hearing from you is if I'm a parent watching this meeting right now, you're basically telling them that although we are doing it in a difficult situation, but you'll not be short-changed in attending a virtual class.
Oh, absolutely.
So, the quality of, and the content of the instruction will be at par or maybe about what they experience in. Am I correct in getting what you?
Absolutely. And let us not forget that, you know, we, that's our base platform, and for some kids, we know they're going to need a little bit more, a little bit extra, and we have to be willing to go that little bit more, a little bit extra for them.
I continue with my, my second question was, under option two, option one is clear, you're coming to option two, the classes start on August 24th, and it ends on September 8th, the virtual part. So, how far ahead do you think you'll be planning? Because in option three, you start on August 24th, and then you have almost two months. So, six weeks ahead of the plan, what's your plan? How far ahead of those September 8th you'll be planning? Should I go back to in-person, or should I continue virtual?
So, the planning of the curriculum, whether it's the virtual track or the in-person remote track, has already started. So, that, we've had teachers in and staff members in the last couple of weeks working on that to just keep it so that, again, keeping those tracks similar, that it's online. When, when the staff comes back on Monday, or Tuesday, I should say, when all the staff come back on Tuesday, that is when we're going to start with, we've had our, we've got our teacher leaders, we have our curriculum experts who are going to work with them on, here's what, you know, the first week, first couple of weeks look like, the assessment. In addition to just the content, we also want to do the social emotional health, you know, at our kid, looking at our kids, we also want to assess where they are, what are some of the learning, learning loss that they may have experienced. So, that content is constantly being developed. The way that our schedule is set up, it, the, and I'll go with option one, just to give you the visual. If you look at the two-two-one, so I have two days, two days of remote and a day of self-directed learning, where I also have student contact either from, could be from my teacher, it could be from my school counselor, or some other staff member in there. But that Monday, and I know folks have referred to it as deep cleaning day, that is, you know, teachers aren't deep cleaning. During the Monday, there is, part of that day in the morning is where teachers continue to plan out, and we're looking ahead. So, Monday is, what does the future look like? We've got to be a couple of weeks out because we don't know, we might get more kids on, on virtual, we may have more kids in, in person. That's what we're doing during the Monday. And then in the late afternoon on Monday, the teachers are working together in their classrooms.
Let me rephrase my question. I'm a teacher in the Lynchburg City school system, I have kids going here. So, I'll hear from Dr. Edwards by September 1st, and option two, that September 8th will be the last day of virtual instruction? How far ahead? Do you plan to announce?
In terms of if we're shifting and more.
Or yes, what?
Well, I, I will love to be able to say, I can tell you those dates exactly, but if, if March 13th proves anything, I started March 13th with, hey, we're going to have March 16th as a staff work day because I'm feeling like we may have schools closed. That was Crystal Everett Superintendent in the morning, Crystal Everett Superintendent that afternoon, governor shut us down. So, if we get to a point where it's Wednesday and Thursday and Friday cases went crazy, I may have to make a decision on the fly and say, it's not safe Monday to come in, and this is going to be our plan. So, I can't give you an exact answer, but what I can say is, we are prepared for any moment like we did in the spring. You got to do this, you, we have to switch and shift.
But can I just clarify? But we're still giving people, families, the 100% virtual option. But we're still giving people, families, the hundred percent virtual option. So virtual never stops. Okay? And I, I, teachers will probably hate me for saying this, but I would think the transition from virtual back to class, face-to-face, is an easier one than from in the classroom to virtual. So the virtual be ongoing, in the classroom will depend on situation on the ground. Is that what you're trying to get at?
Yeah, but people have to arrange their life, they need to arrange, you know, school transport. There are a lot of logistics which go along with that. It's not just the instruction part. I'll move on to my next question is, I know it will have effect on our ADMs.
I'm sorry.
Average daily?
Or what? Yes.
Oh, ADM.
You know, and some may move to private schools, some may switch. So have you, has your staff worked on projecting the effects, negative or positive, on our ADM and consequently on our budget?
So with regard to ADM, ADM is tied to student attendance.
Maybe you can tell people what ADM is.
Average daily membership, student membership. So it's tied to student attendance. And one of the documents that we received last week from VDOE is the flexibility in taking student attendance. So, and it actually is more favorable. So let, let me give you an example of where we might have been if we're just completely in-person. If I'm completely in-person and I'm sick with the flu and I'm out for 10 days, I'm out for 10 days. I hope that maybe I can get some work, maybe my brother or sister picked it up and brought it home. But I might not have that option to continue my learning because my teacher in my classroom may not have been set up in a remote virtual platform. So that, that was pre-COVID. Now, and this is where we have to have flexible attendance policies. If I am a student, and remember, children can have COVID and be asymptomatic. They could be healthy. But because they are, you know, COVID positive, we may not want them in schools. We don't want to send them home and penalize them and say, well, you got to quarantine for 14 days, go home. We want kids to continue engaging and learning. And that's why we're running our virtual platform and our in-person platform side by side so kids can continue. And as long as we have meaningful contact with our children each day, which we will, we are counting, counting that as, as attendance for the day. So meaningful contact could be, we're in a face-to-face Zoom meeting, I'm seeing evidence of you doing, submitting some work. I'm on the phone with you because some of the kids just said, pick up the phone, call me. And we're having that conversation. I'm doing a family thing with you and your family and we're talking social, emotional. Those are examples of meaningful contact. In addition to work products that students can give, that we are going to be allowed to count as part of our average daily attendance, which shouldn't hurt our ADM because kids might not physically be in the building.
What I was trying to gather was which, does any option preference the ADM numbers versus the other?
No, because all options have student attendance being taken.
Required. It will not negatively affect in one option versus the other option.
No, it should not, no.
I have two more questions. Right here. Office hour, several teachers have asked me, will they be virtual or will they, do they have, do they have to come to building if we are going for option two or option three?
So the answer to that question is yes and yes. To be quite honest with you, yes, you may, we may have a, some time where teachers might not be on-site and they can remotely connect with their kids. And as I said, as I stated earlier, even if we have a remote learning option depending upon the needs of the students, part of that remote learning option would require that I might be in my classroom. And again, I was a chemistry teacher, so I'm, I don't have a full chem lab at my home. And it may be more feasible for me to really do a chemistry demonstration in my classroom, even though kids aren't in my classroom. It may be feasible for me to videotape myself or videotape a lesson or use the materials that are in my room. So in that, again, going back to the quality instruction, those options are very possible. But as far as staff are concerned, because I'm, I'm trying to hit questions that I know are coming as well as be responsive to yours, you all have in front of you a couple of tools about just staff protocols. Because we do have staff who may be in a higher-risk group who want some options and perhaps that's what one of their options is, is it possible for me to telework or telecommute or work at home? So what we have devised is somewhat of a flow chart and an intake system that says based on staff, you know, case by case, if I am that chemistry teacher and I am in a group where it isn't good for me, I'm in a high-risk group, but man, do I love my kids and I want to give them quality instruction, would I be able to work, you know, in the school, in my own classroom, in isolation? And also possibly at home and working with my students, having a Zoom meeting, touching base, looking at them, do, maybe they're doing a presentation for me individually and I'm grading it that way? All of those things we need to consider as we look at being flexible with both students and staff.
Last, last question is on my favorite topic, achievement gap. You know, I'm worried about, as Dr. Brennan pointed out, I hope I'm not missing, disadvantaged kids irrespective of race, purely on socioeconomic status, which may be mostly black and brown kids, will be falling behind. And Mackenzie Report is an example of it, which will have long, lifelong effects on these kids. And I, I don't know how true that statement is, that we don't provide Chromebooks to K through five students? And if you're going for virtual learning, if they are, they don't have internet at home and they don't have a Chromebook, how will these kids learn? So I, in, in that spirit, I call Dr. Kathy Franklin, she is the president of Virginia University of Lynchburg. And she said, I'll be more than happy to partner with LCS in any way, form and shape Dr. Edwards want, to help reduce the achievement gap in this tough times. So what is our plan? If we go virtual with option two and three, to mitigate any negative achievement gap which may, we may, our kids may encounter?
So, and I'm going to go back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting. Even a 100% remote learning option still has to be prioritized based on kids' needs. And you have, again, in front of you, our survey from our staff, and I think it's like 768 responses in our survey. And you can see where our, our staff, and you know, many of them were elementary staff members who responded, responded about a blended model or hybrid model, I should say, in-person instruction and then 100% remote. So our first option is to assess our kids. We do recognize that we are providing devices for third grade up to 12th grade. So three to five is a new, we'll, we'll be getting their devices. That's a new group, so it's not pre-K to five. Devices for pre-K to two, no, we were not providing devices for them. And quite honestly, we are concerned with a mindset that says a, a kindergartner can sit in front of a screen for seven, six hours and call that instruction. That is not what remote instruction is, that is not what good quality education is. And that is not what we want to deliver as well. So that is one of the reasons why in our plan originally, option one was, let's get kids in, even if it's at 50% capacity, let's take a measure and see how are we doing? Let's add more kids when we do the middle and high school. Stop and pause, see how we're doing? And then let's continue to do that. But while we do that, let's consider the three most important things. And we, we did this sort of a practice here at the admin building, face coverings. Last, last week, you guys talked about face coverings. And let me just say to my parents, no, I do not expect my kids to sit with face coverings from the time they enter the building to the time they leave the building because even us adults cannot do that. And we have to have opportunities where kids can go outside, they can have what I call the mask break and, and not be in a face mask. Plus, you can't eat when you have a face mask on. So while we're requiring face coverings, I should say, as part of the learning to mitigate the risk, we understand that we have children that we're working with. And we understand that the reason why children are with us is because they're learning. And we want to teach them safety precautions, not penalize them or punish them or anything like that. We also want to keep our staff as safe as possible. Washing your hands is another big one. And, and one of the questions was, do we have enough PPE and cleaning supplies and all of that? And I got back from Steve Gatski that we do, we can start the year. If we have our, our option one, we're good to go. We know that we may have to provide masks for students and hand sanitizer and, you know, oogods of, of soap and all those kinds of things. And we're prepared to do that for students and, and our staff going forward. And then social distancing and making sure that we do practice good social distancing in our classrooms. That's why we're at 50% capacity and, and spreading them out. On our buses, we're not quite at 50%, we're, we're at 3%, I'm sorry, three feet about on our buses. And then on the playgrounds and outside and extracurricular, depending upon the activity, you've seen anything from six feet to 10 feet. And just, you know, spreading kids out and letting kids play and enjoy themselves like children should while also being safe.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and thank you, Dr. Gupta, for those questions. Very informative. School Board Member Harvey.
Thank you, sir. Couple, mine are probably more comments than necessarily questions. First comment I'd like to make is I do support the, the masks. I would like to add that one of the schools that I'm very familiar with is looking at providing masks for all their students and doing them in school colors to the school pride. And I think I mentioned this before. And I know that, I've seen Heritage and EC Glass masks. So I think that, I think that the mask thing can be done in a positive way and encouraging way. So I, I, I support that. Second comment that I'm going to make is, you know, this thing is changing constantly. I learned a new term the other day that was referred to as rigid flexibility. And, and I think that that's kind of where we are. We're, but, but I want to be careful that we're not constantly always reactionary, but we can be proactive with a, with a plan.
They're taking the pictures from the TV.
Okay. So, so then the third comment that I would like to make is regarding the virtual, virtual learning specifically for our younger learners. When we talk about giving them Chromebooks and making sure that they have internet, what if they don't have someone there to show them how to use the Chromebook? You know, I think that's the, the big missing piece. We might have parents that are at work and a grandparent is, is watching over these kids. They might not be, they might be like me, they're technologically challenged. You know, how do you turn it on? How does this thing work? So we have to take that in consideration as well. Dr. Senha, I'd like to hire you. Because as soon as I've been doing some research on this and I was talking with, with Ms. Evans from the educational standpoint, I went back to putting on my architect thinking cap. And I said, you know, we do this all the time when buildings are being renovated. We're moving people around, trying to figure out how do we put people, the same amount of people, keep them working while we're doing something to their buildings? And, and this is basically what's happening here. So what I would like for, to, to suggest for consideration, building upon exactly what you said, because I think that is an excellent idea. And this is kind of where my train of thought's been going for, for the past, say, eight to 10 hours. Go to a semester system. First semester would be online learning for middle school and high school students. That same first semester, air, K through five students would be five days a week. We utilize the buildings that we have to put the students, to house the students. There's something that we do when we master plan is know the pieces. First, we have to have an inventory of all the schools, all the classrooms that we have. We have to know who the students that we have. We have, you know, the busing, just like our busing folks have done to the nth degree. And I'm sure that our, our staff has looked at all this. But I think that we, that, that we have an option there. We could isolate either a small elementary school or possibly even a, a place in our, in one of our high schools for chemistry labs, et cetera, things that would need to be filmed. And what I'm suggesting there is we could actually set up, have our IT folks set up in a central area to help all of our teachers that are trying to do any virtual or remote learning exercises that, that they need to have filmed, that could be put on to, you know, virtual learning. We could also maybe even set up a certain portion of our building that would allow students to come in to do any type of labs or experiments that they need to do, sort of like the governor's school does, where they have Saturday hours for students to be able to come in. I know all this stuff is complicated and there's lots of moving pieces and so forth. But I think that there are ways that we can tackle this. But I, but I think the key piece is, let's look at this, instead of looking at two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, and then we'll react based on what happens, let's look at it from a semester. Let's just say we're going to take this semester, this first semester, and we're going to make a decision and that's the way we're going to try to go forward with, with that unless something major happens that really throws us a curveball. But look at that semester. And then if, if things are, have changed by January, you know, where maybe we have a vaccine and, and again, Dr. Brennan would be better suited to, to address this than I would.
Not responding to that one.
Don't want to, don't want to, don't want to land on that grenade, right? But, but maybe we can then assess that at, between semesters as to what we need to do moving forward. If we need to stay all virtual for, for our older students to, to be able to keep our younger students with in-person learning for the rest of the 20, 2020, 2021 year. That's why I would like to just suggest that, so for my option, it would be option zero and option four would be what I would kind of be recommending here.
Thank you so much of, of School Board Member Harvey. Before I recognize Dr. Brennan, I do want to thank each of you for well-thought-out comments or probing questions. I think this is a very vital discussion that we're having. I do want to just let the board members know that we around the table use the one hour. So we're going to obviously extend our time to at least a half an hour because we want to be able to have public interactions. And I will talk about that in a minute, but I yield now to Dr. Brennan.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And I, I kind of held my comments because I wanted to see what other board members had to say, which was very educational for me and very helpful. It really is great, even though I'm supposed to be Dr. Fauci. My medical background is solid, but the education piece, you all helped me with a lot. So I just want to say a couple of things. One is I want, I want to thank those teachers that filled out this survey and that 75% of teachers who are willing to say that they are, they want to come back either in the hybrid model or in schools and to work with our students. I think it just, once again, speaks a ton for the dedication that our teachers have. That's really phenomenal that we have 75% who want to do that. And I also want to thank all the people who have sent all of us emails regarding this topic. It obviously is very important, as we've said before, it's probably the most important topic that we will deal with during our term on the, on the board. So thank you all for having that, all the community members who did that. Dr. Gupta's already taken away my numbers, so I can't start with that. But I, I will say that regarding the numbers, I am very impressed by the increase in numbers in the month of July. You know, it was going down, it was going down, but it's clearly going up. And I won't go through the numbers again, but there clearly is an increased number. We are still at a relatively low rate, but there's, the numbers are going up. And I think that unfortunately, that the state in some way is probably going to have to respond to that. And I would not be surprised if the state did put us back to phase two or did something differently. I agree with Dr. Nillis that the numbers are still relatively low. But unfortunately, I think this is going to be, it's going to be a marathon and not a sprint. I don't think it's going to go away. I think we're always going to have a low number of cases for a long period of time and we're going to have to deal with that. So I think coming up with a plan, as people are suggesting, to deal with is, is really a good idea. Why our numbers are going up, we don't know. But I agree with Dr. Senha. I think that we, that our community is not, are not following the basic things which people are saying, wearing masks, washing hands, physically distancing. And we need to all agree as a community that we're going to start following national guidelines that ask for the common good, people need to do the right thing. Whatever we do in the school system is not going to get rid of this epidemic. It's what happens in our community and it's pretty basic things we need to do. So along those lines, and I know the board- So along those lines, and I know the board has said this last time, and I will just reiterate again, that I am totally in favor of masks being mandatory in the schools, that all students should have them. I agree with Dr. Edwards, there needs to probably be a break during the day, but they are expected at all levels. We're going to have to do that. And I think the children will lead the adults. I think if the children have to wear it in school, then it should be a good example for the adults to do that. So I, I hope that we'll all, I'm sure we will all vote in favor of that. Regarding the timing of opening of schools, as I said, I really appreciate people's comments because I, too, I'm torn on this. As everyone knows, I've been a big proponent of reopening schools as soon as we can because the vulnerable children are those who have special needs, who are younger, who need the education, who are socio-economically challenged. Those are the ones who are the most vulnerable and the more we stay out of school, the more that they're affected by this. And we know that the American Academy of Pediatrics and last week, the CDC said the risk for kids to be in school is much lower than the risk of them being out of school. There really is a benefit to being there. So I think, you know, that, that is really what we need to aim for. So as a physician, I want to recognize and respond to the increasing number of cases. As a board member, I want to be sensitive to the concerns of our students and our families and our staff. And, and my thought is that we clearly, I think, option number one, which is our original plan, needs to be pushed back. You know, option number one, I think at this point, because the number increasing cases is, is not a viable option. I was leaning towards option number three because I just think it's going to be a while before we see improvement. But I love Dr. Sinha's plan. And I've heard this mentioned in other situations, but it had not, you know, thought about in this. But I think the idea of taking our model option three, which is our first grading period of nine weeks and saying, can we take the K through fifth grade and put them into our schools during that time? There are, are vulnerable kids, they are the ones who need to be in the schools. And then go virtual for nine weeks with the other, with the older grades, middle and high school, I think would be a phenomenal accomplishment. It, it, it helps to get our key students in there. There's less movement within the schools because elementary kids are not going to be going from class to class. And obviously, the key thing is, do we have the teacher's support to do that? Because that's what we're going to need. So, you know, we know it's the right thing, we know it's a good thing. The survey would certainly suggest that, but time is changing quickly with what's going on. But if the teachers are willing to do that, I think that would be a great option. So I would like to vote for Dr., the Dr. Sinha plan.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. All right, now, we have heard from each board member. I know I have not shared anything as such, but as Dr. Edwards has been integrating various things and I think I can do that as well. I do want to acknowledge, I believe that we are YouTube-ing and therefore questions may be coming through in that regard. And if we have them, Dr. Edwards, so whomever will let me know what those questions are. As we are preparing for that, there may also be some in-person individuals that may want to come forward. If you are here, we are going to give you three minutes to share if that, if you're here. But I do want to also acknowledge that there are themes that we have observed. As I stated earlier, each board member has received countless emails and other types of contacts. And we are noticing, and that has been given, thank you, Dr. Brennan, that has been given. You have a sheet that I gave you that has at the top, community input for special board meeting. This is reflecting those themes that we have been able to observe coming either through our board clerk's office or other staff individuals that have been so helpful. Thank each of you, of course, thank Ethel Reeve for all of your work, Tina Barber, et cetera. But as you can see, this whole notion of attending school now is well-stated with the reasons that you see there, 11 supporting statements for that. In relationship to option three, we see comments there. And if you notice, use schools for those affected by educational and economic disparities. So that may be somewhat in keeping with Dr. Senha's notion in the way that it is. And then amongst the 18 questions there, we've answered quite a few of those. So at this time, do, have any YouTube questions?
We do, and let me get back to that, that chart. Some of them are being answered in chat and some of them are coming up on our spreadsheet. And I think I'm looking at them, I need to clarify something that is being misinterpreted. Perhaps I did not say it correctly. So, and I'm looking at chat, people are thinking that we are not deep cleaning on Monday. We are cleaning every day, we are deep cleaning on Monday. My point about what teachers were doing in reference to what Dr. Gupta asked about planning and prepping for future, how far we ahead, I'm sorry, ahead, that is the work that our teaching staff is doing on Monday. So I, I saw a couple of things in there that asked, oh, so we're not deep cleaning. That is not true. We are cleaning and we, we continue to clean not only each day, but on buses in between dropping kids off and using our cleaning protocols between transition as well. In terms of their questions about what happens if we get a positive test, staff or students, we are following the VDH guidelines for reporting, testing. We are going to have, and board members, you, you do have a little handout there, which is a LCS self-screening kind of checklist. So we are asking our staff and our families, I call them co-partners now, our co-partners in education, to help us by doing a self-screening staff before you come in. And parents and caregivers also do a self-screening and temperature check, take before the kids come in. And we are looking to get in our buildings, temperature scanners. And we have processes for upon entry and not the kind that's a whole long line of entry with students. How to, to meet with students and staff and make sure that we scan them, check them rather quickly. And then if we have any of the symptoms or a fever, to quickly isolate the staff and/or student so that we can address it appropriately. We are working hand in hand with our local health department to do contact tracing. I said earlier that attendance is going to be key. So if a student, a staff member needs to self-quarantine or isolate or has been around someone who may have tested positive for COVID or they themselves have tested positive for COVID, our first and foremost question is, can you continue the learning at home? Can you continue the work at home? That's where we start, not how many days are you missing in that? And then we work from there. So there were a couple of questions regarding that. Custodial staff, no, we do not have any plans to hire any additional custodial staff. And I will say to all of us that cleanliness is all of our business. We, you know, do our best to keep our offices clean and sanitized. We have hand sanitizer in the classrooms. We'll make sure that classrooms are outfitted, offices are outfitted. There will be daily cleaning of the, the building. But as a community, we have to recognize that the two, three, four custodial staff members in the building can't do it all by themselves. They need all of us to do that. And if you've ever been in a kindergarten classroom after lunch, you know kids can do it really well. Kindergartners are great about keeping their learning space pretty clean with that. With regard to the spreading kids out across multiple buildings, the one thing that we have to consider is the usage of support staff. Because if I, fifth grade teacher, had 24 kids and I'm meeting with 12, somebody else is with the other 12, even if it is on the same day. If I have a morning and maybe an assistant is meeting with them while I'm teaching and then we switch or however we want to do that. But recognize that unless we double the number of elementary teachers, there's no way for all of our kids to have an elementary certified teacher in front of them if we break them up into classes that are about 50% of the size. We would need to hire more teachers. But that's a problem that we can, we can definitely, we can definitely work through if that's, that's where we want it, we want to go. Questions about are we having half days and half days at home? Right now, our plan is to have, if we do do the in-person learning, it's a full, I think it's a six-hour day for two consecutive days, so not a half and half. But, you know, if we have to modify our schedule and that works better, then, then we will. There were a lot of questions, I'm sorry, on, on YouTube. The online program being both a little bit of a synchronous check-in with staff and students and also asynchronous. And I think someone brought up the point, and I've heard this from parents, that said, I can keep my kids home, we can do virtual learning, but if they are responsible from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM or 3:00 PM to be right there on that computer the entire time, a working parent may not be able to facilitate and be that co-partner in that, in that learning. And that's why we have to have some flexibility with having some flipped lessons, some videos where kids might be able to watch some things at night when they can be appropriately supervised. And I will say to the community, there was a lot of concern about, well, why are you having these off-site learning centers? Originally, when we planned our plan, it was the in-school, the two days in-school. And then we recognized for some families that both parents are working and there is no place for their child to go if both are working. And that was the reason for an off-site learning center because we couldn't get the kids to school. We didn't have a teacher available for splitting the classes down to 50%. But we recognized that there are other caregivers that will partner with us in the community to provide supervision and support. And that was the purpose of that, so that we could continue to do that with students. So I think I hit a lot of them and I'll transition and as they pop back up.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and thank all of you who are watching by YouTube and for your concern regarding Lynchburg City Schools and our concern to hear what you have to say. I do want to acknowledge, as this is a special board meeting, that in our discussions and preparation for tonight, we did want to avail an opportunity for comments from the public in which we as a board would not respond to. And it's as our, our normal procedure, providing opportunities for persons to do so, that we have one individual and we're going to ask Andrew Glover, if he is present, to come forward. And I'll read this very brief statement, Andrew, before you start. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should use the best of language as addressing us in gestures and make your comments about what you're talking about in the proper way. And so understanding all of that, we're so glad to have you, Andrew Glover, and you have three minutes.
All right, so I do, I am representing the Conservative Parents of Lynchburg Group. My name is Andrew Glover. In addition to being a parent of two LCS students, I represent the newly established Conservative Parents of Lynchburg Group, currently consisting of 14 founding families, all of whom have children in the LCS system. Our group unanimously supports a return to in-person instruction at the beginning of the school year. Today, you can consider yet more proposals designed to help LCS get back to school. In the previous meeting held July 6th, the superintendent presented the Return to Learn Plan. In that plan, the intended proposal was to have elementary school children return to a two-day-per-week school session with the remainder of students working online for the first two weeks before transitioning to more in-person classes as well. Admittedly, I was very disappointed in that proposal. Majority of our surrounding counties have released their own plans, which all prioritize in-person learning, some having four and five-day face-to-face instructional classes. If those counties found the resources to accomplish their goals, why can else, why has LCS failed to do so? To further exasperate the issue, this evening, you're looking at two additional proposals that will further shift in-person learning to as late as October. Prioritizing in-person education is a necessity if our children are to achieve the education they deserve. This is true of every age group and particularly of the younger school-age students who do not yet possess the core skills required to collaborate in a digital environment. These include simple things like reading and writing, as well as more complex challenges such as time management, focus, and communication. In-person schooling provides students the opportunity to learn essential skills that they need to succeed but are at a disadvantage to learn in a distant, distance learning atmosphere, such as conflict resolution, leadership, self-esteem, public speaking, making mistakes, respect, teamwork, and many, many, many other skills that are arguably more important than calculus two. Speaking of disadvantage, without an immediate plan to return to in-person instruction, many underprivileged, at-risk, and low-income students, including students of color, will be at an even greater comparative disadvantage to more affluent households which are enrolling their students in a five-day-a-week program at private schools. According to recent media articles, new enrollment is up at 400% of some local applications. By, by not offering full-time in-person instruction options to LCS students, they will fall behind and fail to meet the minimum standards set by the state while their peers in private schools and in neighboring counties excel. Ultimately, this comes, comes down to options. We fully understand that parents do not feel comfortable sending their children back to school right now. However, based on LCS's own Return to Learn survey, at least 53% and potentially as many as 89% of parents have indicated that they are ready to quote, "send their children back to face-to-face learning this fall." For those remaining 11% of parents who are not ready to send their school back, uh, children back to school, LCS can and is providing an online option, which has already been proposed. Similarly, if you have teachers who are not ready to be on-premise, give them the option to teach those online students and assign the teachers who are okay to be on-site to do so. We've learned that might be as high as 75% tonight. Ultimately, the decision to send students back to school for in-person learning should be made by the parents who are most equipped to make the decision. All LCS needs to do is provide a solution, no matter what the parent chooses. I wish I had more time to discuss the vital comparisons, statistics, reports, and considerations. The board, if the board so chooses, I am attendance tonight, watching from the lobby. Feel free to call me in for conversation that needs to be had. I'm not unsympathetic to the position you're in. And as someone who works in large-scale logistics, I understand the complexities and challenges you face. Together as a community, we can solve this. But alone and attempting to make a major, a major decision for thousands of students and parents will only result in discontentment for one side or the other. Let parents make the decision on whether to send their children back to school and accommodate those choices. In making your decision, please consider students, please consider the students who are economically disadvantaged, please consider the students whose only safe place is their school, please consider the single mom who is, who has to work to feed her children, please consider the economy that needs to support the school, please consider the fact that, facts specific to our community and not cherry pick statistics from hotspots. Please do not let fear cloud your judgment. As Franklin Roosevelt so famously put it, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, for your articulate comments. And we certainly will keep all of those thoughts in mind. That's the only person that I have of record for actual public comment. Do we have any other questions from YouTube?
Yes, we do. A person asked a question, if it is unsafe to have sports. And for those who don't know, the V H S L came out with their options to kind of delay the seasons and until December and, you know, flip-flop some sports so that all sports could occur at a shortened season. How is it safe to be in the classroom or return to the classroom is the question? And I think one of the big differences is with the sports. Wearing a face covering is a little bit more challenging depending upon the sport, as is the social distancing when you think about football or soccer or lacrosse as, as some of the sports that V H S L were considering. Whereas in the classroom, we can implement the face coverings. We can reduce the class size to 50% to increase social distancing. We have a little bit more control over the contact because the classrooms by nature don't, don't, aren't like sports where a particular sport like football could have that contact. So that was one of the questions that came up. What kind of plan is there to provide testing for teachers, testing for students? And what's the plan for medical leave for teachers who become sick at school? So we, we somewhat addressed it, the if I become sick at school and trying to have some flexible sick options and, and of course, telework, if you could telework or, or learn at home. As far as, and I'm assuming testing means COVID-19 testing in schools, we do not have plans to do COVID-19 testing in our schools for our staff or our students. We will continue to work with the local health department for COVID-19 testing in the Lynchburg area. Are our schools staff with enough custodial employees to maintain sanitary procedures for children going back into the buildings? And I, I think I addressed And I, I think I addressed this, that yes, all of our custodians are on board and they are being trained. Our head of facilities and maintenance has ordered lots of PPE and cleaning products. But I will reiterate that our, our obligation to our children, our staff, and each other is that this is a community effort in terms of us keeping our workspaces and our learning spaces as clean as possible and doing our due diligence with that. But because our custodial staff will be cleaning in between transitions, doorknobs and light switches and things of that nature as well. Question about high school students, will upcoming seniors be prepared for college? There is a lot of them, lot of growing they do through their senior year. And I wish I had a school counselor here because they would attest to that there is a lot of growing that, that occurs. And our school counselors have been wonderful in tackling this very question and making sure that all of our students are prepared for college and that, you know, even though we have COVID, we don't want to disrupt their senior year and make sure that they're adequately prepared. And I want to just thank them too for their flexibility at the end of last year in making sure that, you know, our students walked across that either platform or outdoor stage as we had it when we had our makeshift graduations. But they really did a lot of work to make sure students graduated. Do we have a parent forum? I'm not quite sure what that, what the person who wrote that is referring to. We did have a parent focus group on Zoom, and we, we had a lot of questions. And I should say, a family caregiver focus group on Zoom. We answered some questions there. We have been taking questions and comments and calls and emails from all of our family members, caregivers. And we also have asked our families to complete surveys. I do have one passionate, passionate plea for anybody who's listening, anyone who has children in Lynchburg City Schools. Please go online and do the online registration. You heard earlier that transportation is one of the things that we have to consider. When you're doing those surveys, do you need transportation? The quicker our families do online registration and we can get a sense of what your preference is, what your needs are, the more prepared we are to meet those needs. We can do a better transportation plan if we know all of the students and families who need transportation, all the students and families who want to do remote learning. And speaking of remote learning, and I know, Mr. Glover, you gave some stats, but our most recent stats, out of 2,671 persons surveyed, 1,073 are, had requested an online virtual remote learning. That's about 40% of those who have been surveyed, who responded to the survey. Not 40% of our population, but 40% of the people of the 2,671 people who responded to that. Okay, and I think I hit, no, oh, there are more YouTube questions. Hold on, I'm here. For a teacher who chooses to teach remotely, would they be surrendering their position in their current school? Or would they be able to return to where they were teaching originally? We want all of our staff to be happy and engaged. So if we do have staff, and we do have some staff who said, "I would love to be teaching remotely, I would love to do an online-only program for students," and we absolutely encourage that. And if we do get where we can have more in-person learning and return to buildings, we absolutely will try to make sure that our staff are back in their home school. Even while we're doing this, you're both LCS and your home school. So principals will make sure that, that we still have that school camaraderie feel to it. What happens when a student refuses to wear a mask? Well, if we're talking about the bus, in order to board the bus, students have to wear the mask. As I said, we're sitting every other seat, aisle and window. Our bus drivers will have extra masks if a student does not have a mask. And I think what we need to do here is educate our students as to why we're wearing a mask. We're not trying to mess up your wardrobe. We're certainly not trying to hamper your speech or your smile. And as someone says, "When I wear my mask, I keep everything that's me close to me, not close to you." And the whole purpose of social distancing is to reduce the amount of, and if you think about me speaking and, and my speech traveling, to reduce the amount of droplets that are, other people are in contact. So we do want all of our students to wear a mask. Obviously, if there is a reason, if a student is like, "Look, I'm irritated, I'm uncomfortable," our staff will do their due diligence, you know, "Come on over here, social distance yourself, get a mask break." We all have those things. But we're asking our parents to be our partners in this, and I think you said it quite nicely. This is, we're a community. Let's work together as a community to make sure that we keep our, our staff and our students safe with that. And now I think of, oh, nope, there's a few. What's the plan for a school if a case arises and someone tests positive? It depends on the school, the location, and the contact tracing. The first response is, after we've done the video, V D H work, is to contain and isolate. So if that's a small group of, of students in a small area and there's been very little contact tracing, it may be isolating a classroom and maybe isolating a school. It depends on the travel pattern, the test positive, on all of the questions that the health department will assist us with in doing that. In any case, we will let parents and community members know so that everybody is informed and what the protocols are and our cleaning protocols for that. Is there a percentage or a number of positive cases that will force schools to go remotely totally? I don't know that I can answer that question with a number or a percentage of positive cases. As much as I could say that, you know, every, every student has a caregiver or family member, that also helps in making that decision whether or not students want to participate in a remote-only option for learning. And we will certainly, if we were advised by V D H or by the governor, if they say, "You have to close schools, you have to close in-person learning," we are certainly going to abide by that. Playgrounds, if students have to social distance at 10 feet on a playground, wouldn't it be better just to send them home after lunch? And it's recess too, because we want to get kids out more than just lunchtime. And I think the reason for expanding it from six feet to 10 feet is, if you've ever been on a playground and you've been around children, there's lots of running, exhaling, sometimes screaming, jumping, and just a release of energy. And that is one of the things that we want to make sure that our, our students continue to do. And we don't want to not have outside activity and outside, you know, recess and playground time. We just want to do it safely and make sure that kids are safe. All right. The YouTubers are pretty quick with it. I think I answered them all.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Edwards. I hope that we can all see how vested this board and superintendent, how vested we are in, in trying to get, what one board member said earlier, is one of the hardest decisions that a school board could ever have to make. And we are fortunate enough in time and space to be a part of the nine in our local division to have to make these hard decisions. We don't want anyone to feel left out. So if there's something that pertinent comes along a little later before we close out, Dr. Edwards, we would be sure to, to hear from that. But I would like to move us to C2, which is a suggested return to learn vote. Now, before, as we get into that section, I would like to remind each of us, as if we have forgotten, flexibility is the key. Change is something that is very common to this process. And so by tomorrow, something totally new could hit us. Please be mindful of that. Also, empathy is very important. And I think that our discussion tonight in this special board meeting is an understanding that we realize that whether you're in pre-K to 12, you only get one shot at being in that grade and whatever that grade has for you to experience both socially and academically. And so with that in mind, we're trying hard to get this right, realizing it would be very difficult to please everyone. It appears to me that we're hearing about the mask with some degree of consensus. I like to call them the three Ws. Wear your mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance. To that end, having heard all of you speak, I think that Susan Morrison mentioned a, a tinge of, of wanting to wait for more information. I somewhat concur. The board chooses to make a decision tonight, we certainly can. But I've heard, I'm coming right to you, Dr. Senha. I've heard from Dr. Senha's wonderful suggestion. I've heard School Board Member Harvey give a suggestion. And all of us have articulated, whether it be two or one, two or whatever. So I'm going to open the floor. I, I'm not sure, and School Board Morrison, Number Morrison, you may want to hear that this now, and I'll come right to you, Kim.
It is my understanding that we have a survey that will not be available. The closing date is, I think, this Friday. And is that correct? And I, I am asking that if we have this survey out there and we're requesting input, how can we make a decision if we don't have, give value to what parents want to give us in that survey? I assume it's a parent's survey.
Is that the parent one that's still open? Yes.
It's the one that speaks to the, the plans for transportation and need for community access, that kind of thing.
I think that's very important.
All right, Kim, Dr. Senha.
That's exactly the issue I was going to raise, that we, we owe it to our, our respondents who are targeted for that survey to allow them the full time to provide that information. And I really encourage people to participate. I would think, given with all this, that our, our survey participation rates would be sky-high. They're higher than normal surveys are, so clearly there's interest. But they're not as high as I thought they would be. That's been a little bit disappointing. And then just one more note about how drastic the situation could change and just something to keep in the back of your mind. And I, I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but Lynchburg is home to two residential universities, one quite large and one of average size, typical. We'll have a lot of students coming into Lynchburg from everywhere. And they will be circulating throughout the city, coming back and forth. We have a lot of our own people who are venturing out to their schools, who will now start to come back in. There's going to be this inflow and outflow of people that we haven't had since, since the pandemic started. And no way of knowing what that could mean in terms of cases, but it's that age group that's really been the ones who are driving up the numbers. So I'm, I'm really worried about that. And then, of course, fall is flu season, and the pandemic mixing with that could be maybe nothing, but could be somewhat serious. So, so we do need to somehow come up with that rigid flexibility, if you will, kind of imagine a reasonable worst and try to prepare for it and hope for the best.
Dr. Brennan, then, Bill Evans.
So I'd just like to suggest that, two things. One is that can the board this evening vote on the mask situation? We discussed that last time, we've discussed it again now. I think we're in favor of that. Can I take that piece separate and say that we're going to have masses be mandatory? The other question is, and again, this is just for the board's discussion, is, I think one of the issues that's facing the superintendent, and Dr. Edwards, help us with this, is when school starts, or what the start date is? Because we sort of decided on that at the last board meeting. Do we want to, or do you need us to address that start date?
Well, in all three options, start date is August 24th, regardless to whether we have the, the young students in in-person or you move that back to in-person on September 8th or in-person on the first nine weeks. We don't want to wait to start. We need to get our kids back and get them engaged. And if we can get them engaged in-person safely, great. If we can get them engaged remote, great, but let's get them engaged. I don't think anybody wants us to do no learning until a later date. So that part, we had, it was more the in-person instruction that we, we were looking at. Do we start?
And I'm going to go in, and I see quite a bit of interest, and I'm going to get to everyone. And of course, to Dr. Brennan's point. However, if the board wanted to come up with an option different than one, two, or three, the superintendent has indicated, we could do so. Am I correct?
Yes.
Which could impact a change in start date. Uh, Dr. Evans? I will make you, Dr. Evans. Go ahead, Bill.
Great. I am just wondering, at least for, it, it sounded like we were all talking about it, that we're all focused on K through five. That seems to be the big push for us, for the in-person. And we have parents that, I, I realize things are changing every day. But if, if we are all saying we are focused on K through five, why can't we acknowledge that and give those parents in six through 12, y'all are going to be online for the first nine weeks? We're going to focus on K through five. And then we can make changes just to give some parents, if we know that's the direction we're going and everybody wants to do that, instead of saying, okay, we'll give it another two weeks and then we'll let you know. If we know that's going to be our focus, let's make it our focus.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, Dr. Carter, then Dr. Senha.
Then Bill, I mean, Dr., Mrs. Evans took my point. Parents, they want to know. They just want to know so they can prepare. If they know, they can prepare. But just keep having, even with the mask, the question was, just let, just tell us what you're going to do so that we can start preparing, so we can start preparing our children to wear a mask or the importance of that. So I think we really do need to do that. The other thing is, with the five days a week, I know we were stretched with the buses going the A and B cohort. So what does the bus situation look like if we're going to try to get A and B students to school all in one day, five days a week? It's that?
Five or four.
I think it'd have to be four.
Four. Well, you're not taking middle and high school.
Right, you're not, yeah. You're substituting the middle and high school bus routes for additional elementary bus routes is what you're doing. And the, and the challenge is just staffing of who is going to teach and supervise elementary kids.
So the bus system is not a?
It should not be because you would, if, if you're not transporting the bulk of your sixth through 12th grade students, then you have buses that are available to pick up additional elementary students.
And so we're talking about four days a week versus five days a week?
Yes, because we still have our, we still have our Mondays where we're doing both deep cleaning and planning for.
Can you tell us, what, what is a typical day? What would the typical day look like for the student? Would they eat in?
Oh, yeah.
Just in one classroom or?
And that depends on the age and the ease of it. But partly in our Return to Learn, Learn Plan is, you have a, and I'm looking more at an elementary kind of blended schedule where they arrive, their breakfast in the classroom or the elementary level. There's a literacy block for reading. K two would be about 150 minutes. K three to five would be about 120 minutes. They have math, they have resource time, which is art, music, movement ed, library time. And they have lunch and recess, again, most likely in the classroom where possible for the younger ones and probably they can, we can use the cafeteria space, but we have to clean up in between students having lunch in there. And then science and social studies alternating on a face-to-face day. And then the children will be dismissed, and the staff will have an additional hour at the end of the day or at the beginning of the day, depending upon the start time of, for our kids. And that's what a, if we were to do the AA day, that's what a cohort would look like for the elementary students.
Dr. Senha, then Dr. Goota.
I have this written in my notes, and then I never remember to say it. But with the K through five, I would really like us to see us also include in that group. special ed, any student who has a particular learning difficulty or disability for whom virtual is just not going to work, included in that group for face-to-face instruction. I've heard from a few people who have children in that category, who are really, they're feeling left out of the conversation, and I'm sorry they feel that way, and it probably looks intentional, but it's not an oversight, it's just a lot of detail. Because I know all of us have talked about that. But to find ways to get as much face-to-face regular instruction for those vulnerable groups.
Dr. Gupta?
I have two questions. Continuing on this, what's your plan for homebound students? Who are on IEP, who get homebound, home education?
Okay.
Home-based education from LCS?
So we saw.
So if you go virtual, what will happen? They'll stay virtual, or will the teachers still go?
Most likely, if it's feasible for the student to be virtual, it will probably be a virtual plan for those students. If we can get teachers to do the homebound and continue to do that, then we will. But again, we have to mitigate the risk of the teachers who are our homebound teachers.
Second question I had was, so this special meeting when you call, what goal do you want it to achieve? So we are discussing option one, two, three, or wait for another two weeks. So what was the ultimate outcome, not specific to an option, was in your mind?
Well, I will go back to, a lot has changed in a week. So in a week's time, we have seen in Lynchburg, our numbers increased. In a week's time, we have received more concerns from our teaching staff regarding, and again, we could do surveys, and I think we have to be mindful of their time dependence. So what I would have surveyed my staff at the beginning of May was very different than if I surveyed them today, or even next week. We don't know. Given that my staff is coming back on Monday, or Tuesday, all of them are coming back on Tuesday, having some definitive direction to say, in two weeks, you're going to be doing in person, or in two weeks, you're going to be online, or in two weeks, this is, that is the sense of urgency that will relieve for staff. You know, and they're like parents, just tell me where we're going, where we're going to do this. So that is one of the reasons for not waiting until the August 4th meeting at night on the day that they have been here all day, to really set them up for success. Because they are eager to get to work, whether that work is online, virtual, remote, in-person, combination thereof, they're eager to get to work. And some clear direction to help them plan accordingly is what is needed.
Dr. Brennan?
So I'd like, if it's in agreement with the board, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to Lynchburg City School Administration that wearing masks be mandatory in the schools.
Is there a second to Dr. Brennan's motion? Dr. Carter? We are not voting on option one, two, or three at this time. As such, we are voting on mandatory mask-wearing across the division. And it has been motion by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, then we will. Do you have a question?
I just want to echo what Mr. Harvey said last time, and it's been quoted, that masks are essential, right? That's what, so.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor of mandatory mask-wearing in our division indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now, we have accomplished that, at least, Dr. Edwards, for you tonight. I am still concerned about any surveys that may or may not be out, in which our stakeholders or staff may be participating in to inform our decision. Coming right to you, Ms. Morrison. I value, this board values all input from all parties. And so, Ms. Morrison?
I just want to remind us of a point that a teacher made with us at our last meeting, that if you're doing one-to-one instruction for five days a week, from in the morning through the afternoon, person to person, how do you do virtual with the students who have, their parents chose not to send them back to school? You've got to have time to do that virtual planning, you have to have time to connect with the kids. I know what I'd like to see, but I'm just, from an educator's point of view, we have to take in consideration what we are expecting teachers and school employees to do, and is it manageable for them?
Tell me what you're talking, I don't understand where you're coming from.
If we're teaching K through five, face-to-face, four days a week, and I have 10 students in my class, and I have five that are doing online, because that's their parents' choice, how do I prepare to teach those five students and time to do it? Just a point.
Right, and my hope would be that the teachers who are medically unable to come into the elementary school buildings to teach would do that. I would not, coming from me, expect a teacher to do that, because it's two jobs.
But it's hard to teach, be a kindergarten teacher if you're a fifth-grade teacher. There are skill sets and planning and, that's my only concern. How do we make it work?
And if they're like me, over 50, we're a little bit technically challenged, so the people, especially age-wise, and I know there are a lot of older people, way older than me, that can do a lot more digitally than I can. But those may not, they may not be a good match. I would assume that all children who choose the virtual route would have a virtual teacher. And so if you're teaching in the classroom, you're with classroom students. And if a student, because they're parallel, they're running parallel.
Well, they're parallel curriculum, not parallel time. So let me just make sure that that.
Right, but then my understanding is, suppose one of your students does have to quarantine, I guess technically they'd still be your student, but they would be getting their virtual instruction from that virtual instructor. You would not be doing that as their in-class teacher, correct?
Yes, so what Mrs. Morrison is bringing up is, I, as a teacher, my day looks like a full day on Tuesday, Wednesday, because I have kids in front of me from, let's just say, eight o'clock to three o'clock, so to speak. Thursday, Friday, I got a different set of kids in front of me from eight o'clock to three o'clock. So if you are a parent who is choosing the remote option, and I am a teacher who is doing in-person instruction, I am not really available, accessible to you and your child while I'm teaching. And the point that you were bringing up is, you know, that workload of, well, if I'm not available during work hours, when would I be doing it? And for that reason, yes, we do have to try to find other teachers who either volunteer, because it could be someone who volunteer, or are at least willing to, if they have a medical exemption, say, okay, I will do that. And again, your point is well-taken. If I was fifth grade now, it's kindergarten, it's a new curriculum for me, in addition to learning a new platform for me. So there is some time, some plenty of time. Now, I will be totally transparent to say, when you're looking at second-grade teachers, we have 11 elementary schools. So second-grade teachers across elementary school. When you're looking at physics, in AP physics, we don't have as many. It becomes more difficult at the higher level to say, every course, every teacher is going to be a virtual teacher. Now, I do have staff who are like, I can make it work, I can have, you know, one of my periods be that connection period and that. And we will try our best to do that, but please recognize, we don't have additional staff that teach specialty courses. Think about CTE courses, you know, those are specialty courses. We don't have a lot of staff that teaches the same courses, makes it a little more challenging.
But see, creating too many options may create confusion. And not everybody has an educated parent or a parent who is involved in their lives. So what happens when you have virtual, non-virtual, half-virtual, half-in-class option? How will discuss, decipher which option is better for them? Will we be providing guidance to them, to the school system? Means it will create a chaos, in my mind, for those people, which we think will have the achievement gap, will be the disadvantaged kids, you know, all of them will be left behind. You provide multiple options, there should be somebody telling that 10-year-old, 12-year-old, 13-year-old, these are the pros and cons of each option for you.
I want to remind us that on C2, we are having a return to learn vote. And we've taken one vote, and we're having further discussion, and I'm willing to listen. But this is to the brunt of where we are. I think Dr. Brennan would like to speak?
I think that the point that Mrs. Morrison, I think Ms. Evans brought up about the having the results of the survey is very appropriate, and we should respect that. I wonder, also respecting the parents who need to know what's going to happen with their students as far as the date goes, and the teacher's coming back on Monday. As I mentioned before, I don't think, unfortunately, I don't think our numbers are going to get dramatically better in the near future. I think that start date of the 24th for kindergarten through fifth grade for two weeks, I just don't think that's going to work. And I wonder if we can at least say that we're going to move, the start date will stay the same, but the day that students come back to school will be that other date, and until we get the information to make decisions, and maybe hopefully get additional information about Dr. Senha's plan, is it possible to do it some other way? But to change that, because I don't think it's going to be a setting where people are going to be comfortable coming back to school that early.
And I like to be as clear as I can when I'm voting. And it would appear to me that we would need to frame out, at least five of you have clearly suggested some affinity for option two, with a clear statement about K to three, pre-K to three, pre-K to five, as soon as we can, for as long as we can. Now, within that, we've had two variables. One, Brother Harvey, School Board Member Harvey, option zero to option four. We have Dr. Senha, who put something out. And what we got from themes from our community, this used schools for those affected by educational economic disparities kind of fits into this dynamic. My only concern is, if we make a decision tonight, it is subject to change tomorrow. So should we not think through the wonderful comments that we've had today, and put it together in a way in which we can bring it back to this board? Each person is clear on what we are voting. And even though we might want to calm or make people, give some assurance, it also would be equally non-assuring to come back the next day and say, well, what we said, we want to go on a different route, because we hadn't thought it through as properly. So I can go with Dr. Brennan's suggestion, that's not my point. I'm just saying to us, August the 4th, after they have come back, with the knowledge we're doing the masks, and the fact that we're working on something probably for that afternoon, I don't know. Dr. Brennan? I mean, Dr. Gupta, I don't know why I'm calling you everybody.
I wish I can make money like that.
Every name but your name.
You know what? No offense, but to me, the problem is, I came to this meeting, and it was an emergency meeting called, so there was an objective, and your objective is, you like a clear direction. Now, kicking the can down to August 4th defies the purpose, then why are we here? Why did we meet tonight? We could have, we've been seeing the same emails, we knew the concerns that are out there, and we could have read and emailed each other, or talked to people over the phone. So what superintendent is looking for is a clear direction before that board meeting, which is on 4th, and her staff is meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, because she'd like to see a clear direction, one way or the other. Let's vote up and down on one option. As you said, they are evolving. That doesn't mean it's written in stone. If things change, it could be changed on Tuesday, refined, or, but at least she'll have a sense of direction with her staff. And she correct me if I'm going in the wrong direction.
No, you are correct. And the other thing that I failed to mention is that tomorrow and, what's today, Tuesday? Wednesday and Thursday, right? Tomorrow and Thursday are, all of our administrators are coming back. So every principal, supervisor, coordinator, it's the first time that they're all back. We're modeling a small group, what it would look like if, and my administrators are going to follow what the children would follow, will get on a bus as part of our training to see what that looks like, we'll go in classrooms to see what, you know, 12 or less in a classroom looks like. But my building administrators need to be prepared for, they're going to meet with their staff on Monday. What are we telling them? What are we saying? How do we kick it off? And I'm the first person to say, I know if we make a decision today, I'm going to roll with it, and if Monday, the numbers are different and it warrants a different decision, I will be the person who stands up in front of the staff and say, yeah, that's where we were last Tuesday, but now it's Monday, and this is what we have to do. And I think, to some degree, and I want to give my staff a lot of credit, because they have rolled with me all summer, all spring, you know, we just kept, this is the current thinking, and they stepped up to the plate. But at this juncture, understanding that the volume of adults that are coming back to the building, and the leadership that is meeting tomorrow and Thursday, that have to set the tone for, this is what we're doing, I want to be able to convey to them, this is our, this is where we're going, our current thinking, based on what we have, and here's how you're going to engage with your staff. And then we can start the, as I said, we have to take each staff member, case by case by case, so that we can move forward. So it would help me to know that we have some direction, albeit it might be temporary.
School Board Member Evans?
Is it possible then for us to say yes to two, with you looking at the possibility of having that K through five be more than twice a week? I mean, with the understanding of you're looking at that, but at least to give your teachers some direction?
I could go with that option.
I mean, we clearly would love K through five in as much as possible, probably four days is realistic with a cleaning day. But if we agree to two, at least we're saying, at least your teachers will know, it will be at least two days for the K through five. And I am okay with saying six through 12 online, the first nine weeks. I would love to have them in two.
I have to say remote. We've got to get our terminology, so we're all saying the same thing, remote, remote, remote.
Remote. So if we have to do that, to me, to get the K through five in as much as we can, I think that that's what we do. Because I think that they are really getting huge gaps, and I think that's the area that we need to focus on.
Dr. Gupta?
If you go in that direction, I'd like to speak on behalf of teachers that they have an option to opt out if they are health issues.
We've already said that.
Yes.
That's pretty clear. By the ministry.
As long as it's clear to them that they have the option.
Right.
To opt out, that will not be taken against them, they will not lose their jobs, because they decided not to go for face-to-face instruction.
And we are saying around the table, it is clear. I'm not sure if anything is clear, as we say clear. But I hear the point about what we are saying, that they assume that clarity only comes when it is clearly communicated and the person is able to say, I understand what it is that you're saying. And that's why we met tonight, is because we're trying to get to clarity. We certainly have done so with the mask. Now, as I stated, School Board Member Evans is suggesting that since there's a good number of us at two, would the board be comfortable with that? But that still doesn't give clarity. We may have given something tonight. I just want you to know, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you, I can deal with two, but I see the concerns of option three. Safety is critical, and you can't reverse when somebody dies. And so, yeah, it's going to be a problem if I can't get my education. I think the superintendent is making it clear that whether it's remote, or whether it's in the building, you're going to get a quality education to the need. The Family Connect program, I'm assuming, is going to find out specifically what those needs are, and schools can be used for those disparities to be addressed appropriately. And that's all I want to say. Now, if we want to feel as though that we made a decision tonight for the sake of making a decision, it's going to still be a need for clarity. Dr. Edwards is an expert in knowing how to do all of that, but I'm just thinking, we haven't solved the problem, because we decide tonight over against August the 4th. Dr. Brennan?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that Ms. Evans is making a motion.
She did not make a motion, she made a suggestion.
I really didn't. I just would, I'd like to give Dr. Edwards direction for these teachers coming in.
Yeah.
I am a teacher. It would be wonderful to have direction. It would be wonderful to have direction when you come in. And if we have to, if we have to vote on this, and say we understand that there are going to be modifications, or we can just do it without a vote, and say, this is where we're going. This is the direction we want you to go with your teachers. Either way is fine, however the board's comfortable doing it. But I think we're all saying, that's the way we want to move, is K through 5 being the focus. And 6 through 12, remote.
All right, I'm going to hear Dr. Senha, but Dr. Brennan is trying to push us that a motion, it would be in order, if that's the will of the board tonight. Go ahead, Dr. Senha.
One way we could interpret our vote, just again tossing this out there, is that, let's say we, we vote for 2. That's our preference.
Right.
Doesn't mean that it's going to happen, because there may be factors that make it impossible. And certainly, the thing that I threw on the table, you haven't even had a chance to investigate and see how that would work. So, we can't vote on that. We can only suggest it at this point, and see if it goes anywhere. So, I would say, in light of all the uncertainty, let's arrive on a consensus, and know that all three are still going to be in play. In some...
Is that a motion, Dr. Carter?
More or less. Does that make sense, or does that...
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Carter?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we go with option 2.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
And moved by Dr. Carter.
Wait a minute, is that option 2 with, option 2 has 6 to 12 coming in?
And, and, and Belle, what I'm going to do, let me see if I can get this on for discussion. I heard a motion from Dr. Carter for option 2. I heard a second by Dr. Gupta. Now, we want to have questions and discussion, Dr. Belle, Belle Evans.
Just a quick question, because it says pre-K through 12 on option 2. So, are we talking about pre-K through 12, just two days a week? Or are we taking 6 to 12 off the table and saying, pre-K through 5?
Pre-K, pre-K through 5.
Okay.
That's going to be our focus. I think that's one thing.
So, we're saying 6 through 12 for the first nine weeks, at this point in our thinking, is going to be remote.
That's, that's not option 2, is it?
Okay.
Well, that's...
No, that's option 2.
2.5, so it's a modification to 2.
Let me hold it, Dr. Edwards clarified option 2 forth, please.
So, option 2 is, all students would come back on September 8th for the two days to on, um, the A B. So, what Ms. Evans is suggesting is, option 2 for pre-K 5, option 3 for 6 through 12, is how she's blending it.
Okay.
A little bit. With the special ed, let me just say that, with, with, if we needed to bring in other students, we could.
Let me go back to the main motion that was made by Dr. Carter, and seconded by Dr. Gupta. Was that your understanding, that we are merging option 2 and option 3? And will you accept that as your original motion?
I can accept that.
All right, wait a minute, I have a question, Dr., School Board Member Harvey?
Thank you. I think what I would offer is a friendly amendment to option 2, to read that pre-K through 5 would begin immediately on August 24th in person. And then, 6 through 12 would be participating in remote learning. And then on September 8th, we would go to two days a week. I think that's what we're trying to talk to about option 2. You're saying you would like for students to be able, pre-K, to go immediately, in person.
No, I'm okay with it being September 8th, if we want to wait until then.
But option 2 talks about the way it reads here. Option 2, we are starting school on August 24th with all students being remote learners.
Right, right.
You're right.
Okay, I just, I really have a concern about that, because I feel like, that we are, we are saying, we have remote learners that do not have Chromebooks and Internet, and so we're going to be providing paper documents to these students. And we have a lot of these students who do not have someone at home to be able to help them. So, we're starting them off for the first two weeks with very limited resources.
And then, we have a friendly amendment, amendment offer on the, on the floor. And, so at that, at this point, we do have to address that. And Dr. Carter, are you willing to accept that?
Okay, but now, I don't know where we are.
All right. A motion is on the floor.
I have a question.
Wait a minute. Clarifying for Dr. Carter. A motion is on the floor by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Gupta, for option 2. All right? The School Board Member Evans raised a question. Dr. Edwards clarified, to help us to appreciate what we really have, is a combination of option 2 and option 3. And now, I believe School Board Member Harvey is trying to give further clarification in that regard by way of a friendly amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and so, to my knowledge, Dr. Carter, do you accept what is being presented as a friendly amendment? From Mr. Harvey?
Are you just saying, start Septem- I mean, August 24th?
Right.
Yes, in-person learning for pre-K through 5th grade.
So, that really looks more like a modification of option 1. Where option 1, pre-K through 5th are in-person throughout, with supplemental distance learning. And the modification is that 6 through 12 are remote for the first nine-week grading period.
What did you say?
It looks more, to me, it looks more like option 1.
That Gary is suggesting.
Right.
Yeah. So, option 1 was, pre-K through 5th would start in-person on the, on the first day of school, August 24th.
Right.
With the others being phased in, beginning September 8th for in-person, on these rotating A B schedules. So, the modification now is, we, we keep pre-K through 5th grade as it's stated in the original option 1, while exploring the potential during the first nine weeks, because of available capacity to do five days a week for those students, or four days a week for those students. And then 6 through 12, for the first nine weeks, to be entirely distance ed, with the exception of special needs, special education students.
Right.
All right, very good. Let me, let me go back. Are we considering a friendly amendment as the same language as a substitute motion?
I have no idea.
Well...
My, my suggestion is, is if we really want to reconsider this, would be to withdraw the motion and, and start over.
Yes.
Let's do that.
That sounds good.
So, a motion to rescind the original motion on the floor. Dr. Carter?
Well, I'm going back to number 2 again. The pre-K through 5th grade, students participate remote learning, beginning August the 24th. That's for consultation with our own Dr. Fauci. And then transition to in-school, September the 8th. And with the, and with looking for, to see during that time, if we can expand it to the four days.
You're going, first thing that will have to happen, is you're going to have to restate that, because there's no second as of yet. But we're going to have to get, say that again, oh, Dr. Carter?
With pre-K through 5th grade, students participate in remote learning, beginning August the 24th. And then transition to in-person learning, beginning September the 8th. And during the, if we can look at, well, I'll just keep it to this. To either the Tuesday and Wednesday, or the Thursday and Friday. And then we're keeping the 6 through 12 right now, for the first six weeks as remote learning.
Is there a second to that motion that we can discuss it?
You, nine weeks?
Is there a second? The motion going to fail for a lack of a second?
I guess my que- can I ask her a question? Why do you want to do two weeks?
That's the question I have. What's the rationale for the two weeks?
I'm raising my hand again and again, questions are being entertained from everywhere.
Oh, sorry.
You need to sit more toward the front.
Yeah, I know, I got to move in the front.
Let, let, Dr. Gupta, there's no need. You, you, I can see you very well from there. And what I would like to do is that Dr. Carter's motion does not have a second. We're not going to discuss it, if it's not. All right, so now we have a second on the motion. Now, we can go into question, and I'm going to go to you, Dr. Gupta.
So, my colleagues are pretty intellect, they're higher education levels, and I see a confusion between option 1, option 2, addition to option 1, option 2. You think about a parent or a kid out there who doesn't have a proper guidance, what kind of confusion will it cause? It needs to be very clear-cut, clearly defined, not a hotchpot, potpourri of different things, which we think are, suits us, or we are able to understand. But we should look at from the lens of the people, who are our stakeholders? Are we causing confusion there?
Dr. Gupta, so well-stated. I reiterate my suggestion to wait, but as we want to go through this task, we will go through it. We will also go through it with the knowledge that we want to become clear. So, there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion on Dr. Carter's motion? Dr. Senha?
Just a clarification. What is the rationale for particularly, well, with the pre-K 5, or pre-K 3, for two weeks of distance to start?
I don't understand that either. Between the pre-K and the 6th grade, or be- or between K 5?
24th and the 8th, why are we doing two weeks of distance for pre-K through 5? When they don't even have, some of them don't even have Chromebook.
Our, our goal was to get the youngest kids in as soon as possible. So, the youngest kids are pre-K for through 5. So, that's where the August 24th start date is, let's get them in. Second to our...
I'm sorry, but in, you mean, in the classroom?
In person.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's, that was my original option. That was, that was our return-to-learn plan. Now, for the staggered approach, and I think I explained this to you all before, when we opened this building, we opened similar. We did, we didn't do A, 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 B, B, we did A, B, right, Barbara, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, we opened the building, no one was in the building, except a few handful of people, probably about five of us. Then we opened the building and said, half the staff have to come on Mondays and Wednesdays? Half the staff have to come on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then you alternate Fridays. And we did it for, we actually did it for three weeks. And during that time, what we wanted to see is, we've now increased the number of bodies in this building. We've asked them to practice social distancing, wearing face coverings. We talked about what we need to do in the bathrooms, the hallway. We did signage, we did hand sanitizer. We, the adults, were practicing what we want the kids and staff to do, while also looking at our risk. What happened during those three weeks that half came in, and then the other half came in? Did we see an uptick of COVID-related symptoms and cases? And we really didn't. So, then we moved from, okay, half and half, to full. We've been full since July 3rd, is that, I can't remember the date. We've been fully staffed, but still no public, from July 3rd. And we've been evaluating that now. Now, we've got everybody in. So, now, instead of Barbara and Denise, one's here, one's not, they're both here, still social distancing, still wearing masks, still practicing hand washing and, and protocols, along with every other, other office. How are we doing? Do we see an uptick in cases? Do we see more COVID-related cases? Then we expanded it to have public by appointment only, and that's where we are. So, we took a stepwise approach each time, looking at, how are we doing? One of the concerns that was raised is that we would go from zero to 8,000 students, or 4,000 students, and 800 staff members, where we've had not that large amount. So, that was one of the reasons for, let's, let's get the, the kid, we know we got to get kids in. Let's get the young ones in, let's get it to get, let's see how it goes, and then let's stepwise and move up.
Can I say one thing, James?
Yes.
If we're not bringing in 6 through 12, I don't feel like we need to have that two week. Do you know, I mean, if, if we're not, if it's just elementary, just the K through 5, I do understand why there was a stagger between the elementary and the middle and high school. But if we're taking them off the table, I'm not sure that two weeks of online is beneficial for them, from August 24th to August 8th. I'm just not sure what, why we're not starting them the 24th.
Okay, and I'm trying to get people who have not commented yet, so let me just do it. Don't start with Nellis, Dr. Nellis.
Dr. Brennan had his hand up.
Yeah, I think...
If, if I could just try to direct and drive it best I can. Dr. Nellis?
I, I do not support this motion. Kids need to get back in school. Like I said before, it's a low-risk cohort. We have 100% online option for families that want it. There'll be accommodations made for staff with, or family members that have, in risk categories. And this age cohort, online learning, personally, I think is a pretty, is a disaster for them. I mean, they're just, it's, I mean, if anything, you want to have kids away from your screens more. You know, they should be out playing and reading books, and, you know, sitting and deliberately plopping them down in front of a screen. You know, it's, that, that, that has issues too. So, I don't, I don't support this, this motion to go two weeks of virtual, or, or whatever we're calling it.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. School Board Member Harvey?
I, I agree with Dr. Nellis, so I will not be supporting this vote. With that being said, I would like for us to vote this motion down, to allow the chair to do what he's trying to do, which is move us to a consensus vote. I would like to vote this motion down, and for us as a board, together, to craft a new and clear motion that we can all understand, and that people, parents, our staff, et cetera, can understand as well. So, I think we all have things in our mind, and I think we all believe we have a meeting of the mind. But maybe we need to address each point and craft this motion, state the motion clearly, and then vote on it. So, I would like to call this motion for a vote, and I will be voting this motion down.
If there's no objection to the call for a vote, if you vote yes, you will be in support of the motion as articulated by Dr. Carter. If you vote no, you will be voting it down, so...
Can we clarify the motion?
Yes, clarify the motion, one more time. Could the motion be repeated if, Tina or Bob, if you have it?
Bad sign.
And, and this is a good piece, it's just all educational. But I'm trying to help us to appreciate that we weren't ready, at any rate. Dr. Carter, would you like to...
Do you want to hear the pre-K?
Yes, ma'am.
Pre-K 5 in person on August 24th?
No.
No, no, no.
Right, and, and that's fine, because I don't want to put the pressure there. Dr. Carter, just restate what it is that you're...
I can't.
You can't do that, see?
I think she had said option 2. She had said option 2 for the pre-K through 5, online starting August 24th, in-person starting January 8th.
September, September.
Sorry, September, and then option 3 for the 6 to 12.
Is that a fair interpretation?
Yes, that is.
All right, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Those opposed to the motion, nay?
Nay.
So, the motion fails. Now, what is the will of the board now, understanding all of the diversity of thoughts? If someone can craft something, I'm willing to entertain it. School Board Member Harvey?
I, I'll, I make a motion to have the pre-K through 5 start in-person on August 24th. We'll take this in pieces. That's the first motion.
All right. So, it's been moved by Dr. Nellis, and seconded by Belle Evans, to do a option 2 with a start date of August the...
Option 1.
Option 1, excuse me.
No, I'm not doing option 1. Pre-K, pre-K through 5, start in-person, August 24th.
And remember, at the beginning, Dr. Edwards indicated that we did not have to go with option 1, 2, or 3 as written. So, we have something, so get those, get the option 1, 2, 3 out of your mind. State that one more time, Dr. Nellis, please.
My motion is the pre-K through 5, through grade 5, start August 24th in-person.
And are, are we starting two-day, the two-day-a-week schedule for them?
With the two-day-a-week schedule, you know, and we can, you know, hopefully look at that, depending how things go.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, it is, sorry, seconded by Belle Evans. Now, we'll have questions and discussion on Dr. Brennan's motion, Dr. Nellis's motion, Dr. Brennan. Now, we'll have questions and discussion on Dr. Brennan's motion, Dr. Nillis' motion, Dr. Brennan.
So, I, I just want to point out that I, I think that the discussion previously related to this motion is that we wanted to push that time back because of the increased number of cases in the community, and we don't, I don't, I don't think that there's data that's gonna change. So, I think if we start at that time, there's gonna be a lot of concern by teachers and by families that it's, it's too early because of the number of cases. So, that's why I felt that option number one, which is, which is starting on the twenty-fourth with the pre-K through five, is probably not a good idea.
Okay, Dr. Gupta?
A question for Dr. Edwards. What happens if, hypothetical, if governor moves us to phase two tomorrow, or next week?
Phase two is you can have pre-K, well, the original phase two, you can have pre-K to three, special ed, ELL, and any other at-risk populations that, that you deem can come in for in-person learning. That would be phase two. And that is, if you look at the way we designed our original plan, we designed August twenty-fourth as being phase two. If you recall, I wasn't sure when we would enter phase three, and I said, I'm guessing, my best educational guess, that phase three will be the day after Labor Day, 'cause I have to pick some kind of time. And phase three includes grades six through twelve. So, that's why you part in parcel, we started our plan in phase two.
Because today too, the governor said in the news report that he's, he may be forced to move to, you know, scale back on the phases. So, will we be back on the table again for PK through five if this motion goes through? To curtail it back to PK through five?
All this is, is giving direction to the superintendent. And it, it can all get blown out of the water tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or, I mean-
But we've gotta have a plan.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis.
Gotta be flexible.
All right, anyone else have discussion?
I just have a question for Dr. Brennan. What if we, what if we compromised and said August thirty-first? That's another week. Just trying to come up with compromises to get K through five back in. What do you think about that?
I think it's more reasonable than starting on the twenty-fourth, and it gives you more time. I think we just need some more time.
Unless Dr. Nillis will to withdraw his motion, that's all the point.
No, no, it's, I, we don't know what's gonna happen, how it's gonna develop. It's like, at this point, you know, like I say, it's, the infection rate in Lynchburg is low. It's a low cohort, cohorts at low risk for contracting and transmitting. You know, it's just like, we need to make a decision and move forward, and it can change tomorrow.
All right, Dr. Carter, on the motion as-
I'm not locked into this.
Okay, Dr. Carter?
No, that's the reason why I was just going with the, the delay in students coming in, just listening to Dr. Brennan's concerns regarding pushing it back some. And I know that the remote learning is not the best, but at least it got maybe hope of some, getting some educational experience. But I have to agree with, just pushing it back a little bit may be the best solution, but you never know. This is a moving target.
Sure.
But I would hate to see us bring in students with the numbers so high, and then just the escalation of maybe the virus or-
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Carter. As in the previous motion, you can not support the motion if you so choose. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? Dr. Senha?
So, I, I just don't see any, other than buying time, I don't see any advantage to remote learning for these youngest students. I just, to me, it's kind of a non-starter. We get them physically in. Now, whether that first day is August twenty-fourth, or September eighth, or the thirty-first, that can be a separate motion. So, his might be, whatever the first day of school is, that's when the K through five, special ed and stuff, visit, are in-person classes. Does that, is that amenable?
School starts August twenty-fourth.
Gotcha.
All right, we're back on August twenty-fourth. Dr. Gupta?
So, I see K through five, there's a push to get them in class. But what's wrong with six through twelve? What bad-
No room.
We'll do that next.
No, what I'm saying, I know your motion will do it next, and Robert will type, but what I'm saying here is, why not they be in class too? Why are we just putting PK through fifth grade as in class?
Dr. Gupta, your point is well stated. The motion, however, is pertaining specifically to K through five, August the twenty-fourth, two days a week. Dr. School board member Harvey?
I'm gonna have to go back to school to get my degree, just so you can call me Dr. Harvey. I would like to offer this, because what scares me is I think we, as a board, are collectively trying to lead by committee here, and this is a very dangerous place for us to be trying to, 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 to lead. I would like to recommend, I'll offer this friendly amendment to Dr. Nillis, to remove his motion. And I would like to suggest that we, as a board, give discussion, opinion, direction to the superintendent, allow her and her staff time to craft this motion, and bring it back to us August fourth, which is a week away, folks. I think I agree with all the concerns that everybody has about, we need to make sure that we're giving direction and, and helping the, our community and our staff and our students be prepared for this. But, boy, we are, we gotta make sure we get this right. And I'm afraid we're not at that point of getting it right. And I feel like that each of us could, could make some suggestions right here, Dr. Edwards and her staff, then be able to go back, process their suggestions, and come back with a clean direction for us to vote upon.
If you would allow me, Dr. Gupta, Gary has directed a statement to Dr. Nillis.
I, I do not vote, I, I do not accept the amendment.
Does not? Dr. Gupta?
So, I'm a sixth grader and have a sibling who's a third grader. So, third grader is able to go to school, but I'm sitting there doing online. That's what I was trying to make a point before. What wrong have I, have I done?
It has nothing to do with something's wrong.
What I'm saying is, look at those kids, what they'll be going through.
But we've got to pick and choose right now because of the situation we're in, and-
That's right, Bill, very good.
K through five right now, or who's gonna have your biggest gaps? That, and they're the ones who's-
I got you.
If parents are working, they're young, to me, that's where our focus needs to be, is pre-K through five.
What the chair wants to do now is recognize those who have not had an opportunity to participate in discussion. Susan Morrison?
I second Dr. Nillis' motion.
Okay. All right, so you're going to support it, I think it already had a-
I am seconding the motion so that we can get to the vote, so that we don't have all these other conversations.
All right, Dr. Brennan, do you have something that you-
I'd like to comment, I, I think Mr. Harvey's comments are, I agree with those completely. I think we've, I think this is a very difficult topic. I think there's a lot of different layers to it. I think we've had a very good conversation. I think the superintendent has heard the opinions, and I think to put it back in there, and her, and her staff's, it's a good idea.
No objection, we will call for the vote. At this point, there was a motion, and it was seconded on the floor. We will now move to a vote. If you are in favor of August the twenty-fourth for pre-K through five in person, if you're in favor of that motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, state nay.
No.
All right, I'm gonna have to call the roll call, 'cause I, I can't, I can't make a determination, I'm sorry. So, you yea or nay, Bill Evans? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
No.
All right, what was that?
Five, four.
Five, four in favor?
Five, four, yea is carry.
All right, motion carries.
That's where we got, we got.
All right.
Wait a minute, one, two, three.
Dr. Carter?
Five, yep.
Excuse me, Dr. Nillis and-
Did you vote, Dr. Coleman?
I voted no.
Five of, five of you said nay, or yea, and four of us said nay.
So, the motion carries?
Yeah.
Dr. Gupta, did you vote yea or nay?
I voted no.
Right.
No.
One, two, three, four noes, and the rest were affirmative.
So, the motion carries?
Yes.
Thank you so kindly.
Dr. Coleman, Dr. Brennan, me, and Mr. Harvey voted no.
So, at this point, we have given clear direction to Dr. Edwards around masks, and that we want pre-K to five in on August the twenty-fourth. Now, the school board member Harvey has suggested that we could maybe have parting comments from each person around the table, unless someone wants to add another vote for consideration beyond what we've done with August the twenty-fourth for pre-K through five.
So, what are, what direction are we giving for six through twelve?
So, we need to probably make that motion.
As of right now, none. So-
I would like to make a motion.
Chair is willing to entertain your motion?
I would like to make a motion that grades six through twelve start school on August twenty-fourth with online, on, virtual, online.
Remote.
Remote.
Remote learning.
All of the above.
Is there a second to Susan Morrison's motion?
Second.
For, for how long? The semester, or?
Through September the eighth.
Wait a minute. Through September eighth, and then going in person two days a week?
Yes.
So, okay.
No, I'm not clear now. Say what you're trying to tell us, Susan.
I am making the motion that sixth to twelfth graders go online August the twenty-fourth through September the eighth, and return to in-school learning on September the eighth.
Which is a part of option one?
Yes.
Okay.
Which means K through, pre-K through five would just guarantee two days?
At this point.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
We'll change tomorrow.
All right, did you second that, Dr. Carter?
Yes, I did.
All right, there's been motion and, and seconded that the grades six through twelve would return on August the twenty-fourth with remote learning.
Correct.
Okay, discussion and question. Dr. Nillis?
Question, student population-wise, is this roughly fifty, fifty, the way we're breaking it out, K through five and then six through twelve?
In terms of-
Number, numbers of students.
Normally, yes, until we get our enrollment.
I'm just thinking, is your kind of like staging the number of
Yes.
Bodies?
Yes.
And, and around the, the school division, okay.
Mr. Harvey?
I will be voting against this motion, because, again, I feel like, as a board, we can provide recommendations to the administration, but this needs to be put together as a cohesive, well-thought-out, planned direction. We cannot keep voting by piece.
Yes.
'Cause we're gonna lock ourselves into a box pretty quick, folks. So, I will be voting against this motion.
Dr. Gupta?
I concur with Mr. Harvey. It doesn't make sense to me to parcel out PK through five and then six through twelve. As I said, they're all LCA students. If, if risk is to one, if risk is to all, so it doesn't make sense. I'll be voting no against this motion.
Dr. Carter?
As for the well-thought-out plan, if we really look, it's pretty much back to the original.
That's the point.
It was a well-thought-out plan. We should've just gone with the original plan, and it's right there, what we're voting piece by piece is actually there, and that was a cohesive plan. We just had other options and, which I thought the conversation was great, it allowed us to do, but that's a well, and it's pretty much originally the original plan.
School board member Harvey would like to respond?
I would like to point out that my fellow school board member made the recommendation or motion for voting option two earlier, but now the thought-out plan that we're seeing is the great thought-out plan is option one, which we approved previously at our last board meeting. So, I would still stipulate that I think there continues to be some confusion around this, and I would recommend that we allow the administration and their staff to compile what they've heard from us, because I, I'm sensing that the will of the board is that we would like to have, and I'm gonna try to summarize this. We would like to have pre-K through fifth grade returned for in-person learning starting August the twenty-fourth. On August the twenty-fourth, grades six through twelve would, would begin remote learning. We would like for the administration to look into the option of how we could possibly use all of our resources to potentially get all students in grades pre-K through fifth into in-person learning at least four days a week. We have the facilities and the infrastructure for our students, grades six through twelve, to be able to learn remotely. So, I think those are the things I hope that I understood us to have a meeting of the minds on those concepts. And if we do, I believe we have shared with the superintendent and the administration the thinking of this board, and then we need to trust and allow them to go back and process this to see if these recommendations can be put together into a plan that we can vote upon, that is clear to all of us, and will therefore be clear to the public, to our students, and to the staff.
That was a fair characterization of what we have stated, hinging on the realities of Dr. Senha's earlier statements about using the secondary facilities to assist with more time for pre-K through five. I guess, Dr. Brennan, not putting you back on the spot, I just, the older kids are more at risk, their families are more at risk. Is that, is that so, or is that something that is an over-generalization?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm capable of making that comment.
And that, that's my reason of the remote for the older kids. You know, I, I, I would hope we're giving the superintendent the flexibility, if the motion carries, to consider what Dr. Senha put on the table earlier, 'cause it, it resonated with me at least, and what we're hearing from the public about using our schools for educational and economic disparities as needed is not exclusive to that, but it is certainly inclusive. Dr. Senha?
What I suggest it only works if middle and high school students are entirely distant-
Understood.
For that semester. And my thinking there is it is a form of immersion for the younger students. Because, one, they're gonna have, you know, they've been out of school since March, so there's a lot of catching up to do. So, the more intensive time, face-to-face, so it addresses some of those issues. But that only works for that length of, 'cause two weeks isn't gonna be enough to accomplish that. A grading term sounds more appropriate in that regard. That's all I'm saying, is when I proposed that, it was under the assumption that middle and high school would be distance for the first nine weeks.
Dr. Brennan?
So, two comments. One is that I know that the emails that we've gotten are not statistically balanced, but most of the ones that I think we've received have asked us to look at option number three, and that's from teachers as well as students, because they're concerned about the number of cases. So, I think we, so I think we need to recognize that. And the other thing is that I, I'm sort of, you know, very much in favor of Dr. Senha's plan, and I'd like to have the administration have the opportunity to look at that. I'm not sure how I, how I get that out of all these different motions, except voting against them, until I hear something that actually allows them to look at that option. So, that's why I'm gonna continue to vote against it, because I just don't think we're giving the administration the ability to really look into the various options that we, that we need. We're doing this in a very piecemeal way, that's not very effective.
I have a question then. We made it clear on the last vote of that going in two days a week, that she had the ability to look at adding time to that. That's why I voted yes, because we said, we said with the understanding that she's looking at that. So, I hope that didn't come across for those who voted yes, that that wasn't important to us, 'cause what you're saying, you still need to-
I know it's important. I think the vote was just for the, for the starting date for the pre-K and fifth grade to come in. That was the motion and the vote on the last one.
It was the, it was the date, and wasn't it the two days a week?
Yeah, the standard plan, I mean, that was the motion, right.
All right, to the makeup of the motion, Ms. Morrison, what Dr. Senha just stated, would that be something that, within the context of your motion, that Dr.?
I, it would change my motion, and I'm not willing to do that. I am capable of changing my mind based on information that I receive and listening to discussion. I feel strongly that our administration, our staff, our- I feel strongly that our administration, our staff, our teachers, our parents need to have at least something that they're aiming for. And if we say, we know that tomorrow, we could see a drastic increase from tests that were done two weeks ago. We know that next Tuesday, we could have another set of scenario, but we can't keep waiting on someone to come up with the crystal ball. We've got to have a starting point. I have made the motion that we, K, six through 12, start August 24th with virtual learning, that they have two weeks with remote learning, and that they start back to school on September the 8th. And I think there was a second to that.
Any further discussion or question? Here are none. We will call for the vote so that we can just make sure everybody's clear. We're going to start with school board member Evans. Vote yes, you are supporting, and if you vote no, you're not.
I feel stuck in this one. I don't like this. Because it doesn't give the option for the little ones to have more time. So I got to vote no, even though I support the six to 12 doing the remote learning. The way this is stated, we can't give the kindergartner to fifth any more time than two days with this motion.
School board member Morrison?
Yes.
School board member Carter?
Yes.
Brennan?
No.
Coleman?
No.
Yes.
No.
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 No. I think we all support Susan Morrison's motion. It's just, I don't know. Is there any other motions anyone would like to bring up before this tonight?
Dr. Senha, do you have, can you bring a motion up?
My, okay, my motion would be, and this is just talking about the first grading period. So August 24th, everybody starts school. K through five, special ed and other highly vulnerable students would have in-person, onsite education for a minimum of two days, but optimally four days. That only works if, for that nine-week grading period, middle and high school students are remote learners. They're older, they can do it. It is for nine weeks, which is a long time. But they've already been socialized into the norms and things of those nature. And then, of course, at nine weeks, bring everybody back.
Can you have something like that with a little saying, saying if we can't get the logistics of a four-day week for elementary, that we can give the two days back to six to 12? Make sense?
Yeah, but I think, I like it cleaner just to say this is, well, I don't know.
I mean, if they have the availability of two days and the elementary's not using it, I'd hate for six to 12 not be in there.
It just seems if, what occurred to me is if middle and high school are distanced, then there's all that capacity there.
Right.
And the reason we're stuck on two days is because we have distancing requirements, and there are physical limits to how many people we can accommodate and abide by distancing. So with that scenario of distance education for middle and high school for the first nine weeks, it allows that more immersive to get students on track, the younger ones, catch up from deficits from the long period.
Well, I agree.
You know, and then at nine weeks, they'll have to go to two days a week. So it's not going to be four day, if the four days can be done, it's only for those nine weeks because there's no way.
Right.
Unless we keep all kids distanced for the whole year, and I would not be for that. That just won't work.
Yeah.
So that, so to get one, you have to do the other.
And the other does have its drawbacks. I agree. I would love to have all the students here as soon as possible. But I'm willing to trade off for those nine weeks, the older students, to have the immersion of the younger students.
Dr. Gupta, do you have a framing of a motion?
No, I'm not framing a motion. But what I want to say is, I understand pre-K and five need to be in school, but as I've been saying all along, I know it puts our teachers at risk. But then six to 12, why can't they be in school two or three days a week too? Means, you know, if I'm ready to go to college, it's affecting my learning. Distance learning is not like in-person, and you can see that, what people have talked to between March and now. So what's keeping us, if we are going to monitor COVID cases in central Virginia from here till August 24th?
I think that Dr. Brennan wanted to speak, but I believe that the one public comment we had earlier stated, give the parents the right to choose. Of the opinion that our original option one was giving parents the option to choose. Is that correct, Dr. Edwards?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
No, I didn't have a comment.
What, Ms. Morrison?
And I do worry about sixth graders. They're leaving elementary school, they're transitioning to fifth grade to sixth grade. There's a lot that we do with sixth graders. We keep them separate from seventh and eighth graders. We have a lot more guidance for them, and we are all at once not giving them anything and lumping them in with seventh and eighth graders. Many of them may have not had the opportunity for just remote learning before, and we're putting them out there without a lot of support. That's why I said two days, so that we could at least get them there. Understand that we're going to be looking at this every week. So just know that this is going to be happening. My point is that we have to give teachers and parents a place to start. And I worry about sixth graders, very much so. Not so much the ninth, although ninth graders are going, eighth graders are going to ninth grade, and there's that too. At least we're giving them something.
All right, excuse me, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Carter?
I know Dr. Gupta posed a question earlier as to what the purpose of the meeting was. And that was to give the superintendent the way to, so she can be able to prepare her staff who are coming tomorrow. And thus far, we haven't done that. So.
Well, to a degree, we alluded to the fact in our July the 7th meeting that we supported masks maybe, but we did not say it definitively. Dr. Edwards?
So on July 7th, he did not vote.
Right.
He gave me direction. And with all due respect, Mr. Harvey, I'm going to disagree with you when you say it's clear, the will of the board. If it were clear of the will of the board, we would not be here. Dr. Gupta, it sounds like you really care that sixth through 12th grade students need some kind of in-person instruction. Am I hearing you correct when you, what you just said?
Yes.
Okay. You are one board member who has expressed, and I'm hearing you, I'm keeping notes in my hand paper, that sixth through 12th grade is important to get some in-person instruction. Dr. Senha, you're willing to trade off sixth through 12th grade for the first nine weeks so that pre-K through five can come in at least four days a week for the first nine weeks, and six through 12 not get any in-person instruction. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yes. Yes and no. I only tossed that out there about the K through five under the assumption that we would go virtual for the older. The more we talk, the more, I'm still in favor of option one, which all kids have some face-to-face interaction with their teachers. Because option three, virtual, is available to, or distance, remote, is available to all families if they want it. But if we only have distance or middle, I know it sounds like I'm changing my mind. I just saw an opportunity to do something different with K five. That was the only thing I was bringing up.
I'm not critiquing you. I'm just saying, I'm stating what I heard, and I'm going to the point of clarity.
Yes.
That I've received clarity.
I would agree with Dr. Gupta and Ms. Morrison that the face-to-face for all students would be the top priority.
Okay. So, and I'm not going to do this exercise around the room, but I will just say that sitting here, I am not getting clarity.
No.
I got clarity about the mask, thank you. I walked away last week on the assumption that everybody wanted masks. I checked my notes, and then I realized I didn't write names for everybody. I wrote names for some, but some people did not speak up in favor of masks. And rather than making that assumption that it was clear to me of what I wanted to do, and that is a big deal for some of our families, wearing face coverings for children, it's a big deal for our staff as well. I want us, as the governing body, as a leadership team in Lynchburg City, to be on the same page. I think it's real important that we do. I understand that we will not please, we just can't. It's COVID. We cannot please everyone. I will say that for the return to learn plan that you have, this is the July 7th one, there were 75 people that worked together to put together these recommendations. And you only have a tenth of the pages that actually went to this. Seventy-five people worked together to come to some consensus. Seventy-five people wanted pre-K through five to have lots of instruction. Seventy-five people wanted all of our students to have lots of instruction. Seventy-five people decided, we aren't going to be able to do it all, but we need to do some. We need to do something, we need to start somewhere. And seventy-five people on, got together and said, all kids deserve some in-person instruction. Let's start there. And then from there, we did develop what I consider, under COVID, the best crafted plan that we have with one of our major concerns, and again, it was pre-COVID concern, transportation. I'm not telling you anything you didn't know. We had that before. We've even changed our approach to transportation to try to maximize what we thought would be a family-friendly, all of the kids in that family would go to school on the same days, and think that family-friendly. So there was thought, there was time, there was collaboration, there was effort, there was give and take, there was I didn't get my way, but I'm going to be in support of it. There was here's my best thinking, there was mitigation, there was here's the data right now, but we know we have to be flexible. That's what led to this. The reason why we're here is because the entire time that we have been working on this, we have been pretty steady with our COVID case. The risk never went away. I mean, teachers were still concerned three weeks ago before our numbers went up. But our numbers have gone up in the last week. And while my staff is very talented, not one of us is an infectious disease specialist. And we're making critical decisions about our kids' lives, our family lives. And all that I'm asking as we make these critical decisions is that one plus nine, make them together and be on the same page. And that we recognize that one plus nine, we're all, we all want, I want, I want my kids back full-time, plus some. I want some make-up time for what I missed, if I could have my way. But right now, as we're sitting here, and we know the administrators are coming back tomorrow, and they're watching us, and they're wondering, how am I going to lead my staff? What am I going to say? We know the teachers are watching us, and they're coming back on Monday. And they do need some direction, but not one single person is going to come back and say, if COVID numbers go way up, but last Tuesday, you said, and I'm going to hold you to what you said. Not one single teacher. But we do need to start somewhere. So if you're wondering what our thoughts were when we devised this, we thought about every kid, and every kid needed some time. We thought about doing a stepwise program. Let's get 50% of the kids in. Let's get them back to a somewhat normal routine with their teachers. And then, if we can, let's increase that. Let's increase the number of children who are in schools. Let's see, let's see how it goes on the bus. We might actually be able to fill a bus, and it'll be okay. We don't know yet, because we haven't even tried one child per seat. But that's the thought behind this. I do not want to make a decision only to have all of you later ask why. You need to be part of the team, part of the decision-making process. We, as a team, we are all Lynchburg City schools. We need to be working together, not isolating and pulling it out. We need to be working together. Our children are counting on us. And I have sat here, and I've spent hours with the people who did this for 60, the 75-plus people. We had nine subcommittees to get to this work. There was a lot of work in here. And many of these people who worked on this, they weren't even, they're 10-month employees. They're 10-month employees. They're not even being paid to do this, but they care about our kids. And if you ask me, do I want every kid in? Yes. If you ask me if I'm concerned about at-risk kids? Absolutely. If you ask me, am I scared about learning loss? Yes, I am. But if you ask me, do I need a plan to go in and be able to get the teachers? Okay, let's go, let's get excited about our opportunity here. Let's move forward. I need that. And I need you all behind me to do that. And we need to be working together as a team.
Okay, I want you to recognize, three of you, put your hands up at the same time. Dr. Gupta, Bell, and then Dr. Brennan?
That's what I've been asking all evening long, is we sort of approved a plan last time, so what has changed since then?
We didn't approve the plan last week.
We didn't.
You gave me suggestions. You gave me suggestions, you didn't vote. And then when I look at who said what, it's not a majority. And then later, you each give me your individual suggestions, and I appreciate your points of view, but you are a board. I need a board direction. I don't need nine points of view and then have to have individual conversations about why I'm not doing your point of view. I need a board direction, and I need a board to act. And in this case, yes, I would like a vote.
Based on your educator professional experience, what would you like to see in your district or in our district, starting August 24th? Some online, some in class?
The plan.
I would, yeah, I would like to see the plan. I want our kid, August 24th, learning is starting. Learning has to start. We cannot delay any longer with learning. Again, I will default and say I am not a medical expert, I am not an infectious disease doctor, and I certainly do not want to put kids and staff at risk. I can only make the best decision when I call the Department of Health and every medical person who, we had a medical forum and they gave us good information, and they say this is what we could best do. But if someone said to me, it is safe to bring all your children back, this, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I would be back with all of my kids. That is the ultimate goal, to get the kids back. But if we can't get them all back, we have to decide on what we're going to do.
Yeah.
I almost wish that that was all said at the beginning, honestly. I will, everything that I've said, and I do agree, K through five need everything. I am going to support your option one with the mask mandate that we've had in place. If the Department of Education changes things, we will have to reevaluate.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, that I.
Second.
Option one, that first gave us.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, option one, just with the updated, well, we already passed the mask, so I guess that doesn't matter. So I'm just saying, the original option one that we had said the whole time, and with the understanding that if the Department of Education changes anything, we will be changing as well.
Bell has put a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I think.
Go ahead.
Second.
So what?
It's been moved by school board member Bell Evans for option one, and seconded by Dr. Carter. We're now in discussion at this time, or questions by the board. Dr. Brennan?
I just want to make a comment. I always feel very self-conscious when anyone talks about not being infectious disease doctor, because I feel like there's a lot of weight on my shoulders. And I want to say that I and I know other board members totally appreciate and have a sense of understanding of how much time and effort went into the plan that's been done. And I think, as we said a week ago at our board meeting, appreciate it, respect it, and all the people who put time into it. I think, as Ms. Evans just said, I think what we're, you know, this meeting was called tonight, I think, to address the two things. One was the masks, which we have done. And I think the other is whatever issue, Dr. Edwards, that you think would be most helpful for us to move ahead with. And I think if Dr., if Ms. Evans' motion of doing option one is, what you think is appropriate, then I would really be in favor of that. We've already approved half of option one.
Correct.
In fact, the mask and the pre-K piece.
So then the other part is exactly what we just voted on.
Right.
Point of order, can we revote something? Voted down.
Or just vote our original plan.
You're speaking to Susan Morrison's motion.
Yeah.
Reconsider the motion.
Can reconsider the motion? I move to reconsider Ms. Morrison's motion.
Second.
Move to reconsider the motion, takes precedent, it's been seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Are you saying start date of August 24th for pre-K, and then eight for the six through 12?
Yes.
Yes, it's really original one.
All right, all those in favor indicate.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, we're reconsidering the motion.
Correct.
Right. And, and the motion is to start remote learning for six through 12 on August 24th.
August the 24th.
And then in-school.
September 8th.
September 8th, okay.
That's your understanding of your motion? All right?
I'm sorry, is that option one?
Yes.
It would be the.
Just to clarify. It's half option one.
It would be the option one. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Oh, we have two opposing, I'm sorry, Dr. Gupta and Gary Harvey, two, so that's seven to two. Mr. Harvey?
I, I'd just like to make a comment here, because, you know, I was contacted yesterday, and I was told that we are being asked to consider three new options.
True.
And I was told about each of the three options, and so then I start doing research on each of the three options, looking at comments that are being made by people via email, et cetera. I guess as a board, I've sat here and watched us be totally confused, confusing one another, making multiple motions about this. If it was clear that option one was what we should have considered, and just simply had voted upon option one in the first place, I wish we could have just done that. We could have come in and said, option one is the option that we as a board need to support, and we need an official vote on it, and just done that. I, I could actually approve of everything that we've talked about here today, because there's been a lot of really good information, good suggestions, that I think should be looked at still. But I really wish we could have done this a lot cleaner, folks, because as, as, as Ms. Evans said, if that was clear from the very get-go, we didn't need to hear about option two and option three, and we shouldn't have put those out there to confuse the community as well. We should have just simply said, we would like to have a vote on option one with the mask.
And if, if I could, because I have done minimal amount of talking tonight, to your point conceivably, Mr. Harvey, I commend our superintendent. I think what I want us to hear that she has said, is rather than administration making this decision exclusively, as may have occurred at an earlier junction when we were dealing with graduation, that this is a joint effort, that we would be given the opportunity to consider all options that are before us, even with the flexibility to have introduced something else. So it did lend to a discussion. My concern was originally, in getting to where Dr. Edwards wanted us to be, I was clear that there would probably be a lot of discussion and thoughts and reflections, which has transpired. I think after we've done all of that, and Dr. Edwards then interjected, I think it has become clear to the board to go with option one. Dr. Gupta, this was a very necessary meeting. I'm glad we had it. I would have felt comfortable if we walked away only saying the mask, because at least that would have been some direction. But I applaud all of you coming tonight, taking your time out, and if you look around this state, nobody is having a meeting in an hour, an hour and a half around Virginia at this time. This was three hours, but I think that even though it may have taken us a while to get there, we got there. And so, are there any other questions or concerns at this point? I'd be glad to hear them.
I just wanted to echo Ms. Morrison's point, that the reason I voted no is that because sixth graders and eighth graders, you know, they need a chance. So 24th to 8th September, if you're going to watch COVID cases, as you're watching for pre-K to five, same thing we are doing for the high school too. So why to put them at disadvantage of having a remote learning, which is not fully defined, or we're still learning the process of remote learning? So, anyway.
If it is flexible, we'll hear more August the 4th. This certainly can be something that will continue discussion and update on, Dr. Edwards, is that correct?
Sure, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. With that having been stated.
Please.
We will now move on to D, item D, informational items. And our next school board meeting is August the 4th at 5:00 PM, and the work session will be August the 18th. Any other additional items for us to be aware of? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'd say move.
Yes.
Seconded for our adjournment. Is there no unreadiness? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.